Hi, welcome everybody to our May 14 Village Board Meeting. We have a very full agenda plus we have some very special presentations tonight that I would like to have put up front, so bear with us and then we'll get into business, but I'd like to lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda, which is not on the agenda, is our county legislator, Brendan Carney, to please give us a brief update. She needs to go to another meeting immediately after that.
Yes.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. I forgot to get it higher and I did do this. Is it working? Let me turn it on. Should be on. Otherwise, I can project. All right. First of all, I apologize, this is the first time I'm here. I did not understand the finer points of bouncing back and forth between the Rhinebeck Village Board Meeting and the Clinton Board Meeting. So now I understand how to do it with some guidance from Gary. I won't keep you all very long because I do know you have a full agenda. I wanted to just highlight a couple of things. We had legislation, our legislative session last night. The legislature voted to override the county executive's veto of a resolution that asks the state liquor authority to extend liquor store hours. I don't know if anyone's been following that. He vetoed the measure and it was overridden by a vote of nineteen to five. So we'll be going to the state liquor authority for a public hearing and then for a final decision from the authority. If you have any questions, there's information on my Facebook page. You can also give me a call for details on that. The legislature has approved funding for the five early voting sites for our general election in 2019, and Rhinebeck is going to be one of those sites over at East Market Street. So there's information on that. I'll let you find that, unless someone raises their hand and wants me to slow down with more details. Alan Scher, one of our town board members, had brought to my attention the suspension of a program the county had been running called "Are You Okay?" It wasn't a program I was familiar with. In fact, I found out that a lot of people weren't familiar with it. But it's for seniors or people in need at home, and it's a program the county offered through the Sheriff's Department to call every day to check in on you. And if you didn't answer the first call, a second call would be made. A third call would be made after a no response to a designated person to check in on you. And if that was not successful, the Sheriff's Office would come to check on you. And Alan had had a friend with a very positive experience with the program recently and was upset to hear that it had been suspended. I contacted the Sheriff's Office. I spoke with several people there, and the problem apparently was old technology or an old program they were using. So they have committed to reinstating the program with new software, and I will definitely be following up with them. And I will also follow up with Todd Tancredi at the Office for the Aging, because I think it's something that particularly here in Rhinebeck, a lot of people would make use of, were they aware of it. So that's something I'll be following up on and working on. And then, to me, the most exciting thing is that some of my colleagues laid on everyone's desk last night at the legislature, a resolution that would ask the public to vote on whether they would like a bipartisan committee to create our maps, as opposed to currently our districts are drawn by the legislature itself. And I believe, and many people do, that we'd have better representation if a bipartisan committee were making those recommendations as to where lines should be drawn for more parity. So, that's my report for all of you all. I do have a pretty active Facebook page at this point. It's Carney for Clinton Rhinebeck. You can find that, and you are always welcome to reach out to me with any questions, and I am right across the street next to Town Hall parking lot. You could ring the bell. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, this is kind of a historic event. Now I'm gonna let our historian, our village historian, Michael Fraser, present this to you and to the village, what he's about to talk about.
I spent a few years on the other side of that table, so I know how many issues you have to deal with, and the quicker presenters get to the point and get out of here, probably the better. I'm here tonight in a very different role, as the, actually, one role is village historian, appointed by all of you, and more importantly, as the archivist of the Rhinebeck Historical Society. David Miller, who's our president of the Historical Society, would normally be joining me this evening, but he's under the weather unfortunately. And the reason I'm here is that we received, a little over a month ago, a gift, we received many gifts, documents, maps, photographs, many of which are extraordinary, but this one was particularly special, and one that belongs here, and we are offering it to you on permanent loan, if you wish to receive it. And that is a pendant. It's a medallion that's in that frame, and it's a, the reason it's significant is it is of a gentleman by the name, who has an unpronounceable name, Aliphlet Platt. He was a doctor, medical doctor, here in the eighteen twenties, thirties, forties, fifties. Died in eighteen sixty-eight, born in seventeen ninety-seven in Pleasant Valley, but he married and moved here to Rhinebeck. And when the village was formed as a separate entity in eighteen thirty-four, it was he who was the chair of the first meeting of the trustees of the village. He remained a trustee for quite a few years. He's referred to extensively and had many comments in minutes that you still have of those meetings. And some of those meetings were held, actually, since there was no Village Hall at that time, the meetings were held in his home. His home was about a quarter mile away from here, where the Church of the Messiah is located today. The Church of the Messiah dates from the early nineteen hundreds. His house was on that piece of property, and his brother William Platt was on an adjacent piece of property. And he was an important character in the initiation of this village. And that pendant that you have came to us from a direct descendant of Aliphlet Platt. Her name is Anne Platt Sturgill de Bousson. She is eighty-two years old, remains quite articulate. She is an attorney who has a apparently nationally-known practice in, she lives in Lexington, Kentucky, and is a specialist in laws related to animals, particularly horses. But she realized, when she was writing a book about the history of her family, that part of her family came from here. And she spent some time researching material that we had in our archives, and that was at the time that we started scanning minutes that are your, are our village minutes. And I mentioned to her that he appears frequently in the minutes. Maybe you'd be interested in that, or she was very interested in that. And when she decided what ought to be done with this pendant, by the way, this pendant was something that had been worn by Aliphlet's widow. He died in eighteen sixty-eight, and Mrs. Platt continued to live here until she passed away some fourteen years later. And she wore that, and you'll notice that unfortunately, the, you're not able to actually see in that display of the pendant, the daguerreotype, but you are able to see on the front side of it, something that's dark. Well, we believe, actually, the folks at Rhinebeck Artist Shop consulted, one of somebody that they worked with is a specialist in this kind of historical artifact, that what you see there is a piece of cloth that he was wearing as a necktie, and a small piece of that was put under that piece of glass, and she wore that as part of that pendant. The flip side is a picture of him. And what's, it's not the reason that we share this with you. We share it with you because he was doing what you're doing, and thought that that was very important, to take time out of his medical practice and be able to serve the community. But the, another reason that particular pendant is important is that daguerreotypes were started, were invented by somebody in France in the eighteen thirties, a person by the name of Daguerre. And they didn't appear here in the United States until the early mid eighteen forties. We're trying to figure out exactly what his age is in that picture, but we believe that if he's in his forties in that picture, maybe even as late as fifty, and it looks like he may be younger than that, that is very likely one of the earliest daguerreotypes here in the United States. So it's quite a significant gift. And if you're interested, we'd love to have it displayed somewhere here in the village. And there's also a description in the second framed item there that we'd love to share with you, so that you can share it with the community. Enough said, because I know you have only thirty-seven other items on your agenda, and a lot of people are waiting to present, I'm sure. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you so much. So, I know you can't see it from here, but what Michael described is very, very significant to the village of Rhinebeck, and something that we should put on display here in Village Hall and find a safe place that we can keep it, so not only is it visible, but also safe. Michael and I have talked frequently about this. I even wrote about it in my newsletter two months ago, and, you know, so that you knew how significant this was. So, we believe it doesn't need to be in a display case or locked up, because it needs to be, you need to see it, right? We don't want to put it behind lock, but we want to protect it from physical. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this from the Historic Society and put it on display, in permanent display, here in Village Hall.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
So, thank you very much, and we will find a home for this, you know, here in Village Hall for a permanent. Thank you.
We're delighted.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Michael.
We'll find someplace to put this, so you can actually look at it, if you would like, you know, so, until we find a permanent home. One of the things, we're going through renovation downstairs. As everybody knows, we're putting in a platform lift, so we're debating whether we wait and try to find a prominent place downstairs, or maybe on the hall up here, but there's still going to be renovation here. So we're gonna kind of work through our construction till we do that, as we talk about places to put this on permanent display. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, another presentation. A while back, I had the opportunity to meet Richard Feldman, who's sitting here in the front row. Just raised his hand. He is a teacher from Maris College who teaches the environmental science class, and we were able to get together and share our interest in the environment, and he was interested in having a project for his class that they could do within a semester, and that would provide some value. Although he's not from Rhinebeck, he's actually from across the river, Olive Bridge, I believe, right? Is Joe on the show, Ken? But the, he was here for another presentation, and we met, we discussed, and at the time, I was very much interested in stormwater runoff into the Landsman Kill. It's a problem we have every year, and with flooding and the rise of Crystal Lake and controlling Crystal Lake. And so, his class, after some discussion and we set some parameters around it, actually took this project on and made it their class project, and so they are here to present their findings of stormwater runoff onto the Landsman Kill and the impact on Crystal Lake.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So, thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Megan Nichol. I am one of the students in the Environmental Science and Policy Capping Class, and I will begin to introduce the first part of this presentation tonight. So, thank you Mayor Bassett for the introduction. I have a little bit of background on this project. We are the Environmental Science and Policy Capping Class. So each major at Maris College has a capping class, and usually they do a project that's theoretical or some sort of research paper. So this year, our project took the form of a community-based learning project, and that's run through the Maris Center for Civic Engagement and Leadership. So rather than do a project that was theoretical, we decided to do something that could have an impact in the greater Hudson Valley community. And as Mayor Bassett said, that was born out of the communication between Dr. Feldman and the mayor. So, this is the abridged version, what we think would be relevant for you as citizens to hear, but rest assured, there is a lot of work that we put into this project over the semester, and it is being compiled and finalized into a report that will be given to the city government for their use. So the outline of what we're going to cover here tonight. First, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the history of flooding in the Hudson, in Duchess County and the village. I'm also going to talk about some of the watershed characteristics that are relevant to flooding. Dr. Feldman will cover historical precipitation, that will inform his discussion of our predictive model that we developed. And finally, Stephen will wrap it up with discussions of monitoring and mitigation. So, a brief history of flooding. Duchess County is characterized by rural and suburban use, with a few pockets of urban areas such as the village. It experiences relatively frequent floods every year, about three per year, of varying intensity and severity. The highest risk for flooding is between December to April, according to the Environmental Management Council, and that's because the ground is frozen during those months, and snowmelt events can deposit large amounts of water relatively quickly. However, this is not the only time that flooding can occur, as we experienced with Hurricane Irene. Hurricanes and other intense weather events can deposit large amounts of water at any point during the year. Floodplains are characterized as low-lying areas that are prone to flooding. The village of Rhinebeck has seven point three percent of their territory located within a floodplain. And this is only going to become exacerbated with climate change. Duchess County is expected to experience an increase in precipitation of five percent by the year 2020, and a ten percent, ten percent increase by the year 2050. So this is going to be increased weather events, more precipitation, and more flash flooding events. So, while we undertook this project, we reached out to homeowners. Perhaps some of you heard from us. We wanted to hear about their experiences with flooding around the Landsman Kill and around Crystal Lake. So we've kept their identities anonymous, but here is the overall, general summary of what we heard from them. Most homeowners said they experienced an increase in flooding over time, and homeowners upstream from the lake, around the Landsman Kill, said they experienced more frequent flooding. Changes in stream properties have been noted over time, and many residents said that they've had wet spots on their lawns, puddles that have just never dried and have stayed wet. And some homeowners have said that shoreline erosion has incurred, lacked, due to a lack of proper riparian zones. So I know it's a little bit of a distance, but here's a picture of one homeowner's property along Crystal Lake. So if you can see, this is the water, and this is their lawn. There's no vegetation that separates that boundary. And this person has lived at that area for twenty years. In that time, they've said they've seen a one to two feet loss of their shoreline. So there are some characteristics of this watershed that are relevant to flooding. So, if you can see here, this is the upper Landsman Kill watershed. This is all of the area from which water will drain into the Landsman Kill and into Crystal Lake. And we determine the size of the area to be ten point five square, uh, square miles. So this is all the water that will, all the area that will drain water into Asher Dam and Crystal Lake. Additionally, the type of soil in the watershed is important to how and when flooding occurs. So if you can see on these colors, this is the town of Rhinebeck, and this is the village of Rhinebeck. The orange indicates that the soil is poorly drained, meaning that water does not infiltrate very easily. The green indicates that it drains moderately, and the blue is well-drained. So you really only see pockets of well-drained areas very infrequently. Most of the watershed is either moderately or poorly drained. And when you look even closer at the village of Rhinebeck, there are many impervious surfaces which will allow no water to infiltrate. So this watershed does not allow for good water infiltration, which just kind of supports the idea that flooding is a frequent problem. So I'd like to invite Dr. Feldman up to talk about historical precipitation.
So, a little preface before I show you some graphs. The most reliable data for precipitation and the most complete data comes from Albany. So just take that as a caution. It's not exactly for Rhinebeck. We have a forty-eight-year time period from nineteen seventy to almost current time, and the amount of precipitation in inches is displayed here, and this is the annual precipitation amounts. You see a lot of variations from year to year. There is a linear trend of increase of about five inches over this period of time, from about thirty-seven, averaging thirty-seven to about forty-two. So the overall trend is a slight increase in precipitation over time, and as noted earlier, this is expected to, to increase. I think we're experiencing it presently, aren't we, this spring? This is showing same time period, and it's now showing the maximum precipitation events in twenty-four hours, the big storms. So the big storms each year. What is the biggest storm each year? Hurricane Floyd in nineteen ninety-eight, Hurricane Irene in two thousand eleven. So, these two are generally trending upward over time, and of course, we're expecting to see more of them. And this is significant, these, these maximum precipitation events, these large storms are the ones that are most likely to, to cause flooding events on the Landsman Kill. I'm gonna skip this one. Frequency of yearly maximum precipitation events in twenty-four hours. So it's similar to that, that last graph, but now we're looking at not the amount of rainfall, but how often one of these events occurs in a given month. Where does it occur the most? In October. This is different than what Megan said earlier in regard to when flooding is expected to occur the most, December to April. This would indicate that October is a time of year that we might also expect some flood events. We have had, for example, hurricanes in October. But in any case, this is suggesting to us, and also July, that, you know, precipitation events can be particularly heavy, almost, and the risk of flooding can be severe almost any time of year. We cannot identify necessarily a distinct flood season. Now, we're looking at crest height. This is, this is discharge data from Wapinjors Creek. Again, we had to go to where the data was best. We don't have long, we don't have any data for the Fall Kill, excuse me, for the Landsman Kill. Fall Kill's closer to Maris. But for Wapinjors, we have extensive data, and this is showing us that the number of years with the maximum crest, the number of times that it occurred in January, the number of times it occurred in March, the number of times in April. So this does confirm the earlier information that Megan gave us, that basically from December to April is when we expect to see a lot of floods, based on the Wapinjors maximum crest. This is when we expect to see most flooding. But, you know, I'd still caution about October. I'm going to skip over this. Okay. Mayor Bassett really wanted to be able to predict when to open the valves at Asher Dam to relieve the, the flooding that might occur up from Crystal Lake. So that was your, your primary interest. Towards that end, the students went to the dam, and they measured the discharge over the spillway, so we have that measurement, and then measured and through calculation determined that when the two large valves are open at the dam, additional water will flow out. In fact, it's one point two two times as much water as just over the spillway. When all four valves are open, plus the spillway, we have one point four times as much water flowing through. So this helps to determine, helps to estimate how much water can be discharged from the lake in a period of time. And I, I won't go through all the details of this model, but one of my students in particular, Jason Randall, worked with some, some experts on this, developed this model. And what's important really is in the graph. Let me orient you here. This, this model tells us how much water will come to Asher Dam in a period of time. So it looks at that watershed area that Megan showed you, that entire watershed area. We get a, a forecast, a weather forecast, of how much rain is expected in a period of time. We take that forecast plus the area and a little bit of additional math, and we get an idea of how much water is coming to Crystal Lake in a period of time. That amount of water is what we want to prepare for and discharge earlier from Crystal Lake by opening the valves. This graph gives us an idea of how much time we need to do that. The green line represents the volume of Crystal Lake. If we open two valves, the blue represents opening two valves, if the valve is open for, for one hour, for two hours, for three hours, we see how much water is being let out. So if we know that a certain amount of water is expected coming into Crystal Lake over a certain period of time, the mayor now knows, so he can open the valves, two valves, say two hours ahead of time, and he can eliminate, oh, maybe close to eight thousand cubic meters of water. That might be enough to account for all the water that's coming. Or, you know, if we are forecasting more, you might need to go three hours ahead and open those valves. In a severe situation, all four valves could be open. So this begins the predictive model. This is a generalized model that makes some assumptions, but gives a start for you knowing when to tell John to get down there and start cranking open the valves. when to tell John to get down there and start cranking open the valves. Okay, Stephen is now going to talk about monitoring mitigation.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. All right, fantastic. So the secondary objective that we had with this project was to find mitigation solutions that can be implemented on a municipality level, but also on a community individual level as well. And as you've heard from my other colleagues here, monitoring might be an implementable solution to act as an early warning system to allow the appropriate local authorities to know when to go down and open the dam in expecting of such precipitation events. So it is our belief that the municipality can utilize both stream gauges and rain gauges in conjunction with one another to, in turn, determine the active real-time measurements of the water level within the Landsman Kill at any point, and as well as rain gauges, which can be implemented in conjunction with these systems or separately for, say, out here on Town Hall. And this will give you a real-time data set as far as predicting the total volume of rainfall that will be incorporated into the watershed, which we saw earlier. So this is just an example provided to us by our friend Christopher Mitchell, who works with Herner, the Hudson River National Estuary Research Reserve over at Norrie Mills State Park there, the D E C office. So this just serves as an example of what this monitoring system might look like, very low-scale, low-impact. So example cost, I did some research as far as what these systems might cost the municipality, and generally they range from about $2,000 to $3,000, depending on the type of equipment and other meteorological tools that are incorporated into these systems. So now jumping into mitigation, the biggest mitigation solution that the municipality will be able to implement is green urban designs. And these range from, you know, street median storm waters, which can be seen here with one, to tree-lined streets, five, and even implementing areas of porous pavement. So we want to extract from this green urban engineering the other mitigation solutions. So pros and cons with the green urban engineering is that this is an immediate decrease to floodwater runoff from your streets, and it has long-term implications. There's a community aesthetic portion to this as well, which I thought the village of Rhinebeck might be able to get behind. I noticed that you guys are very conscientious with the street designs as they are. The cons to this are just initial high costs. It is pricey to implement new kind of infrastructure, as you may know, but we're talking about the long-term benefits of this, completely outweighing the flood damage costs that you're going to be mitigating. So one thing to notice is that we're aware that the municipality has cyclical repair structures, you know, times throughout the year, they pave a certain street and then onto the next one. So we thought this would be a perfect opportunity for the municipality to be able to implement some of these green engineering designs, such as the porous pavements. So this is an example of a rain garden, which is more of a small-scale stormwater collection unit that can be implemented by individuals within the community, as well as other property owners, business owners, and the municipality on a larger scale as well. So the rain gardens are really helped just to design to retain stormwater, increasing that surface storage, and increasing the ability for that water to percolate directly into groundwater. These are pretty low-cost to implement, but there are some cons. It's recommended through research that you're using 150 to 300 square feet of space, which might be a lot, asking of a homeowner to give up that space for us. But this is going to promote a bunch of healthy ecosystems around your communities. There's an opportunity for pollinating gardens. This is going to absorb those stormwaters and help filter out any pollutants that are incorporated in stormwater runoff. And again, this is going to add increased aesthetic value to any property that's incorporating a garden like this. So our most useful natural mitigation tactic is actually riparian vegetation. And riparian vegetation is classified as vegetation that grows on the stream banks about 50 feet away from the stream. So we're talking about the immediate growth of vegetation right on the banks. So this, again, is another cheap solution that can be implemented, as well as have more of a long-term effect. The con with this takes into effect the time that trees and shrubs will need to mature to be able to adequately and efficiently absorb those waters. But the riparian vegetation is also going to prevent streambank erosion, so we're going to conserve the actual shape of the Landsman Kill and promote the total volume storage that that has. So the team was able to choose some riparian vegetation to purport as a solution, and we made a criteria and a ranking system based on these five characteristics: moisture use, soil erosion, which is a function of root depth, and then there's the adaptability to fine soils. As you saw earlier, a lot of the soils here in the Landsman Kill are poorly drained. They're made of clay silt loams. And so the plants that we implement need to have adaptability to that, as well as a quick growth rate, which was one of the positive characteristics, and flood tolerance, of course. So now we just wanted to give some examples of those species.
All right, thanks so much, Stephen. So you heard a good amount of information today, so we just have general conclusions and recommendations to wrap it up. Number one, flooding is an ongoing issue in Dutchess County and around the village, and it's only going to be intensified by climate change. Secondly, we have developed a predictive model that we hope will help the village to control flooding around the area with a few uses and a few monitoring tactics beforehand. We think this will be a really helpful tool to kind of mitigate that flooding. And finally, monitoring and mitigation are really important. So monitoring will help us get that information that we need to use the predictive model well, and that can be accomplished using rain gauges and stream gauges. And finally, riparian vegetation, green urban engineering, and rain gardens are all examples of things that can be implemented to kind of mitigate the flooding before it So thank you so much for listening to us. This is the list of all the people who have worked on this project. It's not just us who are here today. So the policy team was Shay Bowen, Mia Calo, Anna Heard, Jessica Howe, Megan Nichol, and Jennifer Abia. The science team was B. Bradford, Hadeleen Hammett, Sarah Hart, Brooke Peterson, Jason Randall, Stephen Scalia. And finally, this was all produced under the help of Dr. Feldman. So we thank you so much for listening to us tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for? A lot to take in. I can honestly say it was a real pleasure working with the class this last semester. This is a spring class, and Dr. Feldman and myself have discussed an ongoing relationship to take this to the next level, to take this predictive modeling and then actually turn it into, you know, a more exhaustive way to do the prediction of opening the valves and closing. I'd like to also thank our D V W superintendent, John Fenton, who helped the class in terms of, they actually did real life, went onto the stream, toured the stream, contacted customers, and D C Mayor Lewitt, who was with us at the end to review the conclusions and guide him through. So it was a very, very rewarding exercise and something that I think I'd like to continue.
I'm looking forward to that.
So thank you. They all have senior finals, so they're gonna be leaving. That's why I like, appreciate their time for coming to the meeting. Thank you, Dr. Feldman. Pleasure, Megan. Thank you.
Welcome.
I think there are some solutions we can use.
Right, we should probably talk about some of the monitoring.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Mayor Rick Lewitt.
Yes.
I think you want to talk about Chair.
Yes, so yeah, unfortunately, I don't have as many nice pictures and graphs as our students. But I do want to share a report. Just over a year ago, we awarded a contract to the public management program at SUNY Brockport, and it was $45,000. This was funded by a grant from the county. It was a joint project for both the village and the town to look at our highway departments and to see what kind of efficiencies they could find and help us plan for the future. So I'll say here, I can say at the beginning, it says here, we asked them, the village and the town desire to identify and determine what, if any, shared services in areas of consolidation would be beneficial to both municipalities. And in this instance, they are coordinating in identifying potential shared or consolidated highway and maintenance services and activities with the goal of achieving cost reductions and service improvements. And that was really our bottom line, which is how can we be more efficient and how can we improve our service? So we received two reports. The first was on the existing conditions, and the second one was the options. Obviously, the team first came here, they came down, took a look at the village, highway garage, they took a look at the towns, they interviewed the foreman and various members, they spoke to John Fenton, and that was so they could understand what the departments do and what they're doing it with. After that, we then received a report considering the options. So Mayor Bassett, John Fenton, myself had a telephone meeting with the authors of the reports to discuss some of the findings in a bit more detail. And we are currently trying to set up a meeting with Supervisor Spensia and Trusty Alan Scher, who is also their liaison to the highway department. So I'm gonna cut to the chase, and I think this is a couple of the most important parts. What the study found was that the village and the town highway departments really do different services. Our highway department is really more like a Department of Public Works. We do a lot more than simple highway stuff. We're also involved with the water department, with the sewer department, with parades, events in and around the village. Our department is basically more like a Department of Public Works, in that they're sort of jack-of-all-trades. The town highway department is a much more highway-focused group, and that's really what they spend most of their time doing, paving, fixing guardrails, doing highway maintenance. So that particular insight, actually, I think guides a lot of the rest of the discussion. So I'll get to the big question first. Should we consolidate? And the authors of the report didn't give us a definitive answer, but they certainly gave us some indications. And basically, their response was, there's no compelling reason to consolidate the village and the town highway departments. And the reasons were, first of all, because they do have separate functions. There's just not a lot of overlap between the two sets of functions. Second of all, we get into some of the weeds. We have different bargaining units, different union representation of the village and the town. Harmonizing their contract and getting everybody together could be a very difficult and long-term process. Also, it's hard to administer even from a village and town level how you're going to coordinate the activities. So that was their, so when we go out, I know we hear a lot when we're campaigning out, talking to people, how come we don't consolidate the village and the town highway departments? I think we now have a good answer, which is that we've taken a look at it, and there's no real compelling reason to do so. Would not be a money saver, would not create much, would not create a wave of efficiencies. We're better off basically remaining as we are. However, the report was very clear that the next best thing that we should really be implementing is routine sharing, routine sharing of equipment, routine sharing of men, back and forth. And their recommendation was that there should be a standing intermunicipal agreement between the Rhinebecks and actually any other municipality. Could be Red Hook, could be Myland, whoever we want to work with. Their point was in, sort of, we have a lot of old-school highway superintendents around here, so there's a lot of sharing that goes on informally between departments. People need a dump truck or something, people send stuff out. The issue is cost and when something goes wrong. So in the informal environment, this can become a sticky issue. Their point was, it's good to have something written out ahead of time, it can be a blanket agreement that is basically applicable. They gave us an example from the town of Ulster, which they, Ulster uses with other municipalities in area, which they thought was a good template for this kind of sharing, this kind of municipal sharing, and it's something we'll be pursuing. They also made some internal recommendations for our own highway department. One of the things that they thought we could be doing better was monitoring our internal job costs. So based upon, they said, you know, it's very hard for us to cost out what the paving is costing versus debris removal versus digging holes for the sewer department. So they suggested that we do a better job of monitoring our costs. Now, already, based upon the initial discussion we had, I know that John Fenton already spoke to the foreman down there, and they've started to work on doing better accounting. However, there are within the reports some recommendations in terms of software and some other time accounting management practices that we can implement. Also, the town of Fishkill is leading a joint municipal study on some of this time accounting software, and we need to find out where they've been. The other highlight that they did bring to us was basically a coming issue for us. I'll do this in a little bit, big way, in facilities. We have, our highway garage is approximately 60 years old. The building is structurally sound, but as they said, it lacks space for typical highway garage operations and functions. Basically, we're really packed into that space, and as they pointed, it's not that safe. The roof is gonna need replacement, the HVAC is quite inefficient, and lastly, as we just heard, it's in a flood plain. So the garage is in a difficult site. So one of the questions was, is this an opportunity to co-locate either the town or the village or the village and town, something to look at? So there was another engineering group brought in, this is all part of the same study, and they took a look at our needs, the towns' needs. And basically, what they found out is that co-location really is not feasible. And the reason why it's not feasible is that the logical place would be for us to head up towards the town. The problem is that the town site is too small. The town site is bounded on the east side by a small brook, and it limits how far they can expand. And these guys actually went as far as to, you know, took out blueprints and maps and suggested building sizes, and what they found out is that it would be really very difficult to wedge everybody onto the same piece of concrete. So that was disappointing to some degree, I'll say, because it seems like it would be a nice thing to be able to do, but it didn't seem to work out that way. They did suggest that in the future, we look to a spot further to the east across the Landsman Kill, on the other side of the Landsman Kill, from where our current highway garage is. The issue for this is that it's expensive. We're talking about $2 million investment, and something that, you know, obviously, we're not gonna do quickly or lightly, or we have to study. But they wanted to put, at least on our longer-term agenda, the idea that we're gonna have to address this building over time, and that it really is inadequate for what we do right now. We store material, we store equipment outside, and it's very hard to service the vehicles and work safely inside that building. So that's basically the broad overview of the report. My personal... My personal action plan that I'm looking forward to doing is working with John Fenton to continue to improve our internal controls. I'd like to iron out intermunicipal agreements with Rhinebeck, and certainly talk to Red Hook and some of the other municipalities so that we can implement these shared service agreements. That seems to be a very effective way to go, it's flexible, it's convenient with a good set of ground rules, everybody knows what's going on. And then lastly, we'd be starting to look around to find if there are additional resources for building highway garages, if there's any state-county money that's out there. Haven't looked yet, but obviously, with a $2 million potential bill, we would be looking to find as much additional funding as we possibly could in order to keep the burden on the taxpayers low. So that's the overview. Does anybody bring any questions?
Yeah, I don't know, because I don't know if it was missing, it just maybe wasn't the scope of this, but I was surprised it didn't have like an inventory, equipment inventory.
Did you see the initial conditions? The initial, they gave the existing condition study?
Well, what I mean is, some of the trucks, trunks.
There was, there was, there was.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they did.
In the February report?
I know it was in one of the drafts.
Yeah, yeah, they did do that.
An earlier one?
Yeah, they did do an inventory.
Okay, I'm sure you guys read this informally, I was just wondering how that would be handled and if that was.
Yes.
I didn't see that.
We had not, we did not discuss a rotation or equipment plan.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
We didn't spend any detailed time.
Right, but we don't need to pay a consultant to do that, I mean, if just.
I think.
There's a discussion about it.
You know, one of the things that they did point out is that we do currently, we share salt, a salt shed with the town. The town is also our fuel depot, we do share those facilities. And their thought was, you guys are actually doing a pretty good job in terms of sharing what you can, but over time, you're going to want to maximize, maximize that ability. I think it's just, one of the important things to think about the report is, even if it came up with, I don't want to call it a null result, it gives us a talking, it gives us a chance to understand what's going on. There's always been a lot of questions, should we be consolidating, what should we be doing? Now, I think we at least have a reasonable data point backed by, backed by the facts, and we can say, hey, we've taken a good look at this, and we think this is the best way to move forward.
Rick, excuse me, early in the report, there's a summary of the DPW for the village, and 60-year-old foundation, trying to find the right way to categorize this. It seemed almost a little worrisome in terms of the safety and the current structure.
Well, I.
And location.
And location, yeah. I think that the people who did the report, who did the facilities report, are people who design and build modern highway department garages. So when you look at what they consider to be state-of-the-art, not even, not like all the bells and whistles, but what they consider to be a well-designed, well-thought-out highway garage, this is to them a complete nightmare. You know, they're, they're used to, you know, from the, literally, they build these things from the ground up, so the floor is shaped properly so that oils and things don't run in the wrong place, you can have a pit to service vehicles. They just, it's really, they're really, really well-thought-out. Basically, we're in a 60-year-old garage, and it doesn't have any of those nice design qualities that you want. I talked to Mike, I think I talked to John, we're not in any, it's not going to fall down in the next day or two, but at some point, some option to, or some plan to replace, probably replace the building is in order. It should be something, I think, on the village agenda for the long term, and we should be looking at the long term, but I don't think we have a, it's not a now, not a now problem.
And their recommendation was over on the other side of the stream, outside of the floodplain.
Right, that would be the other thing, is that, you know, you would never cite that building where it is now with sort of modern, under more modern environmental and more thorough understanding.
And I think it was a suggestion or hint that it might be more costly to make repairs, I suppose.
I think costly to make repairs, the other thing about it is that that is in the floodplain. The Landsman Kill, which we've been discussing, can back up and has started a flood on that property. And if the problem's going to get worse, the last thing we want is water infiltration into this, and if you've been in there, you know, it's full of, you know, it's full of work materials, we couldn't see that. So eventually, moving that building out of the floodplain will be necessary, but again, something that the board really needs to plan for.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions? Good, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is our public comment section. Karen, do we have the list? I believe most of these people were just signing in, coming in, but I'll go through the list. I know Michael Fraser was here, Christina, you're here representing McCabe and Mack.
Correct.
We'll get to that, so. Brendan was here, Ron and Debbie, Fent? Okay, anyone else that's been here? Richard Feldman, Capers Solari, that was part of the students as well, student, Liz Mazzara, do you have a public comment or are you just signing in, Liz? Donna Warner.
I'm here.
I know, how are you?
Dry. Warm.
We're only on, what, day 28 out of 30?
Something like 26 out of 32.
You saw the prediction of where we're headed.
Open the valve.
Does anybody, does anybody, just quick dialogue, does everybody know what we do to open the valves or what our model is today?
No.
Myself, and John, and the highway department, we take turns driving around, and we have key points that we look at to see how high the water is, and then we say, pull the plug or not, and it's usually, it's at the last minute. So this is important, what we heard today, so sorry for that. You know, but we literally, you know, if they're not here, I go out at nighttime with a flashlight and check water rise, you know? And then to open the valves, you're putting your life at risk to open the valve. You climb down a ladder in the middle of a torrential storm, unlock the chain, and turn this large valve. That's what we do.
Very impressive. And I thought the model was, I thought that was very practical and really, really important. I was interested in asking, though, I didn't want to take the time, and how many person-hours they actually spent on this study, it would have been.
Well, it was their whole semester.
Yeah, considerable.
Big class.
So that was very, I'm here to make a brief comment on the short-term rental regulations, and I have a letter here, I'll hand it in, so I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but last month, Mr. Mayor, you said that new short-term rental code provisions would be forthcoming for public hearing, and I'd just like to ask that you consider in these new drafts, in either drafting them or reviewing them, a few points. And one is, to consider the testimony of many residents over the past year and a half who have, who oppose non-hosted rentals in the village, that you consider in your deliberations the voices of neighbors who have communicated to you and through various media, their frustrations for both legal and illegal STR violations and the lack of enforcement action. I'd absolutely like to ask you to consider the intrusion each STR can make into the lives of their neighbors, and I'm estimating up to six neighbors as some other towns have done in their codes. These are neighbors who become unwilling de facto supervisors. The disruption can be extensive. I know that you, the village, identified 38 STRs, I believe, they may not be all operating right now, but 38 in January. And just to illustrate again, if there were 40 STRs in the village, they could impact up to 240 neighbors, or more. And that is more than 20% of village residential units, excluding the woods and the village green. It's actually 22%. So just to give a sense of the scope of the impact. I think you, I would also ask that you consider the enforcement process itself. I'm not speaking about the fines or the steps for withdrawing a permit, but rather, how do neighbors who witness or suspect violations report them? How will the violations be verified, and especially nights and weekends when the code enforcement officer is usually not present? So I think those are important questions. And then lastly, the need for enforceable definitions. The one that we looked at or saw evolve over the last year was changing the room rental provision that limited rentals to four adults. That evolved into four adults and six total. That would be an example of a provision that I'm not sure everybody would understand what that means, how can it be verified, and again, by whom? I haven't seen your new draft, or I saw a part of it about two hours ago. So anyway, despite the, some resident opposition, it last October, Mr. Ray, you proposed to allow 15 non-hosted rentals for 16 days per year while also expanding them from one to two bedrooms to three bedrooms. I believe that the vast majority of village residents do not want this. I think the simplest and best solution for the greatest good is not to allow any non-hosted rentals. Some people believe the best solution is not to allow any short-term rentals. That's not my personal position. But every proposed code provision must be enforceable, and to this end, the code might require each non-hosted rental operator to file in advance a list of dates the house will be rented and notify all immediate neighbors of those dates. That would be something routinely done, perhaps under a special permit. And lastly, I think that many residents are not just concerned with non-hosted rentals, but particularly if you read all of the articles coming out around all over the world, are also concerned with the growth of all short-term rentals in the village. So to preserve our quality of life and restrict business use in our residential and historic district, we would ask you to consider placing a limit on the total number of STRs in the village, not just the non-hosted, but all of them, so that we can see that there, this is not going to expand exponentially. So anyway, I hope.
Thank you.
We'll consider this.
Thank you.
Do you need these, or just give them to Karen?
Karen, thank you very much.
I'm here for something entirely different, I'd be thrilled. I want to thank you. The water department, Karen, came to my rescue. I was overwhelmed with the prospect of wasting water, which made me feel crazed, because I hate to waste water. I had a bigger-than-usual electric bill, and Karen helped me calm down, told me how to make sure it wasn't still leaking, and the water technician came the next day, and he read my meter, and he showed me the exact date, and I knew what had happened, and I was so relieved and so grateful, so thank you.
I will say, our water department under Lady Brenner, they do a mighty fine job.
Wow.
But sort of all the other departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else? Is there anybody that didn't register who would like to have public comment? Next, I'd like to move into the billing, planning, and zoning, and we have three big items I would like to jump to, the short-term rental update and set a date for STR public hearing. The board has had in front of them since April 19th a draft from our legal department, and Christine is here to represent McCabe and Mack, part of our legal department, a draft set of codes. So what I would like to do with this draft code, since the board has had a chance to review and comment, is make a motion that we go into, set a date for STR public hearing, and then we can move forward with this process.
Point of interest, I thought there was going to be, you had said earlier in the year that there would be a workshop before the public hearing, so.
We've had several workshops.
No, that was in the past, but when the regs, the proposed regs came out, there would be an opportunity.
I said I would make them available, all the regulations available to you and to the public. I did say that, and I will, as soon as the board approves.
No, that there would be a workshop before the public hearing was scheduled, so that, or after all these years.
If I said that, I don't remember, I apologize. I don't remember, but I don't remember setting that date or setting a date for a public workshop.
No, the date had not been set, but the idea was, when the regs were ready to go to public hearing, or right before then, there would be a workshop, because there was so much, so many drafts, so much discussion, so many previous workshops. Now that, you know, we shall see where it all came to, it makes sense, and you had promised to make, to have a workshop before the final public hearing.
Okay, I have a proposal, and the board can amend that proposal and actually go into a public workshop if we would like. So the way that works is, we get a second, and then we have discussion, and then we can amend. So do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? On the board?
So I've written a memo that's very critical of the most recent draft that came down, but I think the most important thing is, I'm just going to read a paragraph of what I said. My notes from the fall, after taking a straw poll from the village board, it was then constituted, indicate that I was to include in an earlier draft the following terms: Non-hosted rentals is a separate use category, a special permit required for all B&amp;Bs, a lottery for non-hosted rentals with 15 total licenses, licenses, up to three bedrooms allowed for non-hosted rentals, and a 16-day annual limitation on non-hosted rentals, along with, together with an enforcement provision. And I don't believe that we need to go to public hearing on this, I just don't think that anybody really wants, and I think we did a commendable job on an earlier draft, we had five workshops, I believe, but I think we came to the conclusion, we created some basic terms that nobody really wants. I don't think the polity, the public, is really willing, and we've heard from over 200 people, to accept those terms. And it isn't what I want to do, or what the committee, the commission that I was on that created the earlier draft wants to do, or we as a group want to do. I just don't think, I think we've heard from over 200 people, and I don't see what, why we would take this to a public hearing. I don't think there's a public will, and I know we have a representative government, I don't want to go and poll people. However, master plans are created initially from polling the public to see what the needs are of the residents and what they want, and what I want and what they want, probably two different things. And I don't think, see the reason to even go to public hearing on, on the new draft, whether it's my draft, or it's the draft that came down, or a hybrid of the two, which I could happily work with McCabe and Mack on cleaning up, or whatever you wish.
I agree with Brent, and I appreciate the memorandum that he wrote, it was very, very good, and he deserves tremendous credit, Mr. Mayor, as do you, for each carrying this as far as you have.
I agree, I agree.
But here's where I'm at. I think that this runs counter to what I believe government should be, which is try and do the greatest good for the greatest number of people. That's not happening here. I also think it is incongruous to governments of all sizes to create so many layers. We really shouldn't be in the bureaucracy business, we should be in the anti-bureaucracy business, and we're adding so many layers. Bottom line is, I am not going to support anything that has the word "unhosted" in it. And so for that reason, I don't think, unless I'm in the minority, I may well be, that there's a reason, as Brent pointed out, to go to a public hearing. there's a reason, as Brandt pointed out, to go to a public hearing, because I have no interest in moving this forward.
I want, I want to say one more thing. I believe, again, like normal, we're ahead of the other municipalities, because we spent two years, or a year and a half on this, and we've explored every avenue, you know, we did everything we could, we've had so much input from the folks on the commission, from the workshops. I think we've done a commendable job, but sometimes punting is, is not really like looking for a trap door and ignoring things, it's just coming to a conclusion that you're, you're doing the right thing.
So I think it's almost a parallel, I'm sorry, to, because oddly enough, those of us that were here just 10 days ago on hospital, in very much the same way, we are at an impasse, and as Brandt, I think it's very eloquently said, that's, that's something to be ashamed of, that the punting sometimes is the best answer. Well, we don't know whether we're gonna really move forward with the hospital or not. What we did was agree to try and give it a little bit more time.
Well, I think we have to give that time, and that's another topic for discussion. So I've looked at the draft language, and I thought that our attorney actually did a very good job of addressing a lot of issues from their attorney's perspective that needed to be cleared up, quite frankly. And the, the language they came, they came up with was extremely elegant, and I think is a firm footing for, you know, thinking about this and bringing it to, ahead to a public discussion. But what I'd like to understand a little bit more about is some of the rationality in that language, and I was going to ask our attorney to speak to that, because there are a number of issues that, you know, need to be considered. I'm not in general in favor of, you know, unhosted short-term rentals, but there are other concerns, and I think maybe this is a time for you to speak and talk about how you formulated this language and some of the reasons for going ahead with this language. Is that possible?
Well, we didn't address the language, to my understanding. The, the language that was presented to us several months ago, the first draft that, that I'm aware of, yes, I made multiple comments, because I think the greatest concern here, obviously, this is a very popular topic of discussion, right, amongst the nation, okay? I mean, the research I did, there are full-on bans in places like San Diego, New York City actually has a ban, but it doesn't qualify on much larger buildings, but it appears as though that, at least in the, in the courts, we haven't seen clear opinions on whether there, what the legal issues are, other than the most common one you see is vagueness, right, that constitutional vagueness argument. So if somebody can't understand what the language means, then how can they abide by it? So what we did, what the firm did, is in taking the first short-term rental, which may have been proposed by Brandt, was just to...
Well, as a commission, I didn't...
As a commission.
I was basically a scribe. And by the way, Rich, Rich with McCabe and Mack got back to me on that draft, and he had four simple changes. And now the most recent feedback from the same firm is that there's 11 changes. So something happened in the creases, and I was moving the ball, and then all of a sudden, somebody moved, you know, changed the rules, so I don't know. I, I can show it to you, I can show you, he made his comments in the brackets in November.
In, in November.
And I said, let's, yeah, I agree, I agree, let's do this, that, happy Thanksgiving, and then all of a sudden, six months later, and I, so...
Okay.
I, I don't know what to tell you.
So what I can tell you...
Because I have some follow-up questions too, so please go ahead.
Okay, so, well, my understanding was that, you know, we made comments, and it was really to flush out some language, and so make sure that they're...
Right, that's a second, you second bite at the apple from McCabe and Mack, just so you know.
Okay, you know, to my understanding, we didn't, we didn't, then, then there was the newest version, which was, it looks very different than what...
That's right.
Yes. I, I, my understanding that this came out of, of the board, out of the commission, committee. Did not come from you.
Not, not this trust date.
No.
So the only thing that we gave to McCabe and Mack was the draft and our minutes from our meetings to be able to pull this code together.
Right.
Okay, I, I did draft certain, the, the penalty section based on emails that were given to me as to what you were looking for, for the penalties.
Which I like, by the way, personally, but, so...
So we're, so we didn't take it upon ourselves to, to draft this, you know, out of what we felt the, the village was looking for, or what was necessary, it was what information we were given based, based on what we thought was discussion amongst the court.
So the information that you got, just to be clear, was Brandt's draft and no other instructions?
I did give them the penalty draft, like, in terms of the penalty...
And what I saw was notations from Rich basically saying, you know, some questions and clarify the language, and then the draft.
I'm sorry, Paul, but unless I misunderstood our attorney, the second draft is very different from what Brandt had submitted.
Yeah.
Right, the first draft...
So there had to be two separate documents.
Yeah, there seemed to be very two different documents. The first one was really seemed to be a change in focus on the short-term room rental, whereas the second one was creating, you know, its own category of, of short-term rental.
So I would be happy to work with you guys to blend the two, or whatever you want, and Rich asked me to do that just the other day, but I want to know from, from these people, from the folks on the board, whether we want to even pursue this and go to public.
Right, and we didn't take it upon ourselves to set the restrictions on, on anything, so if something was miscommunicated, you know, soon, I would apologize.
Well, I just, Brandt, the substance, those five or six points, and I was, I told everyone that I was gonna put that together in a draft and get it to you guys, and happy Thanksgiving, that's fine, I just don't think that those six things that I mentioned are worth going public hearing on, that's what John, I mean, that's the business, the business posture here.
Yeah, but let's explore this. So in terms of addressing the issue of enforceability, is it better to have a stated code of some sort, or is it better to leave it open? What's the rationale behind writing the code?
Well, based on my understanding of what your code is now, there's no provision for unhosted short-term rentals. You have provisions for bed and breakfast, and you have the, the room rental, which, which I would imagine that most people believe, would look at that and say, well, that doesn't cover what a traditional Airbnb would look like. So do you have anything in place which would provide the restrictions it sounds as though you're looking for?
So having, does having the restrictions help with...
If it's not in the code, it's not...
Excuse me, Marcia.
Excuse me, does having the restrictions written down, some description of it, help with the enforceability issue?
Yes.
And why is that?
Well, people have to know what is, is restricted. People have to know what is permitted of them, but I don't believe that the code as it stands right now states that, you know, those single-family dwellings are, are not permitted to do what they're doing, doing right now, renting out their rooms. There's nothing that says they can't do it, so...
That is not true.
So let me, I want to ask this in a simple term for me. If I, let's just say, I bought a house in the village of Rhinebeck, and I didn't, it wasn't my primary resident, and I wanted to rent it out for less than 30 days, in blocks of less than 30 days. So basically, in my opinion, that becomes a, like a mini motel. Does our code today restrict that?
Not...
I think it's...
I'm asking for...
I know, I know.
Really, it's such as you have, what you have with your, your room rental, I, I don't know, you know, did your CO, what did your CO say? Does it specify, when you have, you have designated uses for property, and, but do those, I don't see where those uses are further, further defined as into, as into occupancy? You, you do have definitions, a definition?
So my concern is, on that first part, on that definition, if we don't have enforceable code to do that, and somebody did, and somebody did or is doing that, right, we're at risk of allowing it to happen, correct?
Well, how do you stop it from happening?
How do you stop it from happening? Okay.
This is not, this is not the way the law works. I'm a lawyer.
She's actually correct.
If it's not in the code, it's not permitted. So in a sense, in that sense, these other uses are not permitted, because they are not in the existing...
So Marcia, I appreciate you, but I'm listening, I want to hear from our legal counsel.
You're putting her on the spot, that is...
You know, I am, she's our legal counsel.
These are political decisions, this is not legal decisions.
That's part of it, but I wanted to get a, a legal description of where we are. My second question is, if it was my primary resident, and I, and I did hear, and I did do short-term occasion rental, and we didn't, is there any way that I can stop, somebody could stop me from doing it, given our code today? And what I hear from you, and what I heard from you is, we can't. Is that true?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see, a, and, and, you know, I, maybe I'm missing something as to what you have defined as owner occupancy or single-family residence, but I, I don't see any, any restriction on those particular uses of the property and how they're being occupied, if it's by, you know, other than the definitions of, of multifamily. I don't know that you are trying to stretch this into a multifamily situation, so I don't see how...
So it is, it's either, I mean, I think the mayor's right, it's either a mini, you know, Marcia's right, you have to pick a use on, on the use chart, and then there's a sentence that says that this use is not on the use chart, it ain't allowed, it specifically says that, you know, I'm paraphrasing. So it's either a mini, you have a choice. Is it a non-hosted bed and breakfast, which bed and breakfast is required to be hosted, or is it a motel, which isn't, which it's a mini motel, and that's not allowed either in residential districts? So I respectfully disagree, I mean, we've, we've had this discussion on and on, but we could make it more declarative, I mean, like, in a Cooperstown, there's, you know, explicitly say you cannot have, you know, these, these non-hosted rentals. And I agree that, but by implication, and John Rossi gave me some materials from NICOM and said, you can't by implication even prevent, you know, non-hosted rentals, but I don't think we should have this legal discussion in front of...
Well, why not? This is, do we have to?
Well, it should be an executive session, I mean, she's, she's making interpretation right now. He's enforcing our, our code.
Correct.
But it's important that we get a legal definition.
We're relying on our legal counsel to guide us.
Well, she needs to, she needs to have time to...
Well, I think she's...
We're springing an opinion, we're putting her on the spot.
Yeah, that's, I think it's...
So what, what is it, so it, it wasn't clear to me, you know, what the topic of discussion would be, but it's obviously more so, why, this seems as though the consensus is, why do you need to do anything at all? It's not permitted, because it's not in the code. But then how do you enforce that? Because people are obviously doing it, right?
How are you enforcing it?
He is enforcing it.
He is enforcing the current code.
Uh-huh.
You're not?
No, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, are we not in a process of enforcing the current code?
So what happened was...
So John, can you give us a...
Yes. Can I just add one definitional issue? One of the problems is if you read this proposal carefully, in the first sent, two sentences, there's a contradiction. You're using a term that says "non-owner-occupied." That is not a correct term, it should be "non-hosted," but all of them are owner...
We haven't released this to a public hearing.
I know, but I'm just saying, we are, we have looked at it, and before you put it to public hearing, I would suggest that it be vetted, word by word.
So I did say at the last meeting that I would only release it on approval of the board.
Huh?
I did say at the last meeting that I would only release this draft on approval of the board.
Well, there are logic...
So apparently it is released, so, all right, so anyways, I would like to have, we have, correct, and so this is really not the workshop, and this was, I was for the board to make a decision on what we wanted to do, and that's where I want to get to. And one of the things we have been doing is, John, we put together a task force back in March, and the task force has been diligently going through, and I've been giving updates from our superintendent and, and zone enforcement officer. So since you're here this evening, would you like to give us an update?
Sure. So back in March, we put together a team of four people, it was myself, my, my assistant, the village clerk, and a resident of the village. And so with the help of the public and the resident, they put together a list, like a target list, of 38 residents that were using their properties as either a B&amp;B, or short-term rental, or otherwise. So out of 38, we basically notified each property owner of the current code, and the first mailing was more of a notification. You know, we do have a current provision that addresses the use that you are being not accused of, but we have evidence that you are operating in that capacity. Please contact, contact the office by April 15th. April 15th rolls around, we receive many calls, and it, it came to the point where out of 38, 16 properties fell under the use of a room rental, owner-occupied, resident-host that we legally permitted, 16 out of 38. Nine no longer used their properties as rental properties, other than taking their word for it, there's no other way of proving that, so it had been documented. Now, if down the road, we find out that that particular person had decided to turn, to change his mind and use the property, I could go into a direct appearance ticket and take him right to the court. So we have documentation on who's who and who's claiming what. Two locations were appalled, and they said that they never used their property in that capacity at all, and they are very angry residents. So we, we apologized up and down for that one. Eight are presently in progress of either receiving or going to the planning board for a B&amp;B establishment, some are on defense with respect to either pursuing, continuing the process, so eight of it, eight, eight property owners are in, in limbo. And then three are the unknowns, Airbnb, haven't heard from them, I'm assuming they're Airbnbs, that, because they're avoiding my department. Now, these three remaining on the list as of tomorrow will receive an appearance ticket to go to court to explain why they haven't called, why they haven't contacted the office, so, so on. So that's, so that's where we're at, and this is the only list I have as of now. We worked it pretty well, and it's boiled down to three. We still continue to monitor the, the website, to see if anything pops up. You know, if I had a wish list, I wish that people would be more forthcoming, but at a minimum, can you guys give me at least a crystal ball? But, so that's where we're at, that's, that's the list I have. So we are enforcing the code as, you know, and again, you know, I, when you bring an appearance ticket to the judge, you've got to have probable cause, proof, you know, burden of proof, you have to basically be on a reasonable doubt, be able to show the court that this person is operating in that capacity. Compile that evidence is the hardest part, so it's not something they can just go out and just start closing all these operations, you've got to build cases. And so, and so I think, you know, since March, and that were tomorrow's, May 15th, we knocked down this list from 38 to three.
So... That was exhausting.
So I'd like to follow up, because based on that, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to be picking on the attorney, but you're here and, and you're working with us and for us. So the enforceability issue, okay, that John is confronting, is that helped by having the code in place concerning short-term rentals? Would that be helpful in any way?
Well, I would have to know what codes are you seeking to enforce.
Well, let's just say, you know, the code that is being written now, as a threat.
It's the use, it's the use we're looking to enforce, not so much, we have a code already in place.
Right.
It's that one aspect of the use where it's an Airbnb, non-owner-occupied, you know, that, that use, which is basically an epidemic...
That use is prohibited because it is not in the current code.
Right.
So it's very clear, legally, there's no doubt on that.
So if you're looking for something new in order to be able to enforce something, there
is a code. There's no ambiguity.
So Martha, I appreciate your input, we really do, but, and I'm thankful, and I'm thankful that you're here, but this is... I'm thankful that you're here, but this is what we really want to...
Okay.
I really do appreciate your input, but we have a time and a place, so thank you.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, your question to me is, would having the short-term rental law, which defines what a short-term rental is in place, help facilitate the enforcement? My question is, what are you currently enforcing? You're enforcing the current use, all right, and these are single-family dwellings?
So, right, according to 120-17, if you have, if you're an owner occupied and, you know, you're hosted, you're there while it's in operation, if you have two to five room rentals, it's considered an establishment, which has to go through a site plan approval and a special use permit. All right? If you are owner occupied and you're there while it's in operation hosting it, and you have one or two rooms, you can, it's classified as a room rental, and you can go into my department, pull a permit, it's an annual permit, you have to have a fire inspection, you have to comply, comply with a handful of conditions, with no parking in the front yard, and so on. So, there's, and there's items that you have to comply with. And so, right now, we're managing, you know, logins that legitimately want to basically do this. We have people out in the field that didn't know they had to, and then you have people that, that do know, and then they're trying to hide it for so long, and now, you know, it's come to the surface. We have that aspect out there, like every other municipality, where there's this Airbnb epidemic that we don't have a grip on. And so, I think what's happening is, like the, like the city of Beacon, they chose to ignore it. Now, what happens is, what becomes unfair to all the people that have actually gone through this process already, the site plans, the special use permits, the permitting process, these people that have been semi-dragged in to comply, now are saying, okay, well, now I'm legal, I have my permit. What about this person next door that's operating in this capacity, and we all know he is because he's on the website? How is that fair to us? And so, this is what I'm coming against. This is what I'm faced with. Now, you know, I don't make policy, I just enforce it. And so, right now, I don't have a law that I can enforce, so if it's, if it's not on the use chart, it's prohibited, you can't do it, period. And so, and that's, and I agree with that, but if you have a government that's trying to work with an epidemic or a business that's probably not going to go away, at some point you're going to have to address it. And so, I think we're at that crossroad right now where, what do we do? You know, you know, do we, do we ignore it? If it's prohibited, do I drag these people into court? Because last time I dragged somebody into court, the judge had an, had an idea that there were laws working on the books, and basically, he just gave it a stay. And so, it still operated in that capacity to the point where that particular person just decided to sell the house, and then it didn't become an issue anymore. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
But your report proves the point, that it can be done.
It can.
You are controlling it.
Right, right. So, but it's that, it's that Airbnb aspect out there that is everywhere, and so, if it's prohibited, now I have to, it, it, it's up to me to basically gain all my evidence that this person is operating in that capacity, and basically bring him into court. I don't know what's going to happen when, and I could easily do that. I've been prosecuting my own tickets, I know the process with the judge, I know what he's looking for. I guess I'm just going to have to do it and see how it pans out.
So, with the law, is what I'm saying, having the law in place...
Right.
In essence, relieves some of the investigative burden on John, because he could basically look for information that should have been filed with these individuals, and if it's not there, he can proceed immediately, because in essence, there's clear guidelines that needed to be complied with.
That is the case now. I don't just, you keep repeating this point, it's totally off...
So, excuse me.
Well, I haven't gotten any...
That is the point, this is...
Well, trustee is asking a question to our legal counsel.
Well, yes, I, I think it's a general common sense question, is if there is a law on the books that people understand that what is permitted and what is not, is it easier to enforce? Yeah.
So, right now, this use is prohibited because it's not recognized in the use chart. So, right now, it's prohibited. The, the administration is trying to maybe not accommodate, but try to maybe legalize or not legalize that type of use, and that's what, that's where the issue is right now.
That's where the issue is. Do you permit it, or don't you permit it, and to what extent do you permit it?
And is it, is it truly prohibited based on our current code? I really, I want to understand that, because today I don't, I do not.
Well, I don't think I do either, because you have, you have a room rental home as a permitted use, allowable use, and we know what that is, there's a definition for it.
And it requires hosting.
Right, I understand. And then you have, what else would this be falling into? Are you saying that this is a single-family dwelling and it is not being occupied by a single family, and therefore, it is, it's not being used as it was...
It's not a CVO issue.
Or as a permitted use? So, but, so then what are your arguments? Because there's no definition of what a single-family dwelling is, so how do you show that it's being used outside of the scope of what a single-family dwelling is?
We have a dwelling, a single-family dwelling definition.
A detached building, other than a mobile home, or other temporary structure containing one dwelling unit. Okay, well, how does that tell me that I can't have guests come?
Because it's illuminated by the definition of bed and breakfast.
And room rental. Okay, so you have a definition for bed and breakfast, you have a definition for a room rental, and so that everyone is clear what those are.
What that would allow an applicant to say, it's not, it doesn't require, this isn't, this isn't a bed and breakfast, this is an air bed and breakfast, therefore, I don't need to host it at all. You can't do that.
But air, air is a, is a term like Xerox. I mean, that's, that's a form of advertising, right?
I don't know what they're, I'm just saying...
That's just a form of advertising. It's, I don't care how people do it.
The code suggests you can't create a use on a thin air, so...
There's no person-to-person contact, everything's done remotely and by computer. There isn't any hand transaction of any money, it's, everything's done, I like your house, I want to rent it for the weekend, boom, okay, send me a visa, okay, here's the combination, boom. No interaction, that's air, it's out in the air, it's, it's airwaves. That's how they communicate, that's, that's the definition.
But it's not unique, it's not, it's not unique to residential. It'd be the same if I'm, I'm selling drum kits on my front porch, and I say, well, it's not retail, because it's not a music store. I don't sell violins, I don't sell, I mean, we could go on and on.
But here's my, here's where I was coming from. So, we've seen epidemics like this in other areas, so the scooters, the bikes, these get dumped all over a city, okay, and all of a sudden, they're, they're in use, and now there's this innate momentum behind this, and the reason that there is, and they got dumped in the first place, is because the municipality was behind the curve in terms of recognizing that something like this might happen. And so, there wasn't a definition placed, so that the first time, for example, one of these scooters or bikes or any of these, you know, Uber cars came on board, you could just go out and stop them right on the spot, okay? And so, that's where I'm coming from in this concern. You know, what I saw in this draft code was something that was, quite frankly, not very easy to deal with, was, you know, quite well-restricted, well-defined, had some owner's fines in place, and something that was, you know, quite limited. But what I also saw was a definition that could be used that would empower John and give us something to work with immediately to start, you know, blocking this sort of unhosted, short-term rental, we defined what that would be. I also saw a consistency in terms of, you know, the use of one's home with the IRS code, which is something that's, you know, basically well-established, and it defines how people can actually gain rental income, and I think that's a nice overlap. And so, whereas I'm not in favor of, you know, short-term rentals per se being proliferated all over the place, what I am in favor of is controlling it in a way so that it empowers John and the municipality to act, you know, directly, forcefully, and according to a very strict definition. So, that's where I was going with it. I'm sorry, I'm not picking, I'm not trying to pick on you.
No, I mean, that's what I thought was great.
I have another, you know, question for you, which is, you know, if we do, let's say a blanket restriction, you just can't do this. You can't do a short-term, unhosted rental of any sort. Is there any liability that we might incur by restricting the use of one's personal residence in that way?
Right, and that was my first thought, right, when I was asked to look into this. You know, can, can a municipality restrict somebody's use of property in that way? And there are bans, there, there are bans across the country, and they have, they have been fought at the legislature, legislature level, because they are unpopular, but I haven't seen any case law which suggests that you, that the municipality is permitted from putting that into effect. So, there being Fort Miami, I believe it's Miami Beach, there's a complete ban, San Diego, there's a complete ban, and there's no published case law to say that, you know, I thought, well, this is a taking, you're taking somebody's property rights away from them and how they use it, but we have zoning laws, which are, you know, it's widely accepted that municipalities have the right to, to enforce, to create and enforce the zoning laws. They will be strictly construed against you as a municipality, but there is nothing that I have found to suggest that you, that there is any liability on municipality to, if it was to be a complete ban, and it just maybe hasn't played out in court yet.
And one other final question, so there was, I guess, a court case in, in New York City that was decided against the city, and I believe the basis of that decision was that the city was intruding on the practice of individuals by gathering a lot of information, personal information, and I'm just wondering if you looked into that and, you know, where does that stand? Because right now, it was ruled against the city that the data collection was intrusive, I believe.
And that was the lawsuit that involved Airbnb?
I believe so.
Yes, I, that's, that's what you see, the, the major players here are the hosting platforms, that's who, yes. And then, and then you have your privacy rights and the demand for the host to share information with the municipality, and, but, so yes, I guess you do have some concern there, especially if there's requests that, you know, certain records, home records be made public to the rest of the tally, that you're, you're in violation of privacy laws. I didn't see that as a concern in what was in the legislation here, because there's, I think, you know, there wasn't this publication of, of that information, but yeah, I think that that's something that we'd have to take into consideration if you were going to want to make the information you collect as a municipality on each of these homes, and, and the information on the renters themselves, and making that a matter of public knowledge.
There was a standard, there's a, there was a case in LA that they were pointing out that was, that where they were keeping motel records, and it ended up, they were quoting that LA case and the New York case that you talked about, was you can't keep all that detailed data on your customers, so we'd have to be mindful of that.
Well, it's also not only keeping, but requesting, I think.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Requesting, keep, you have it.
Well, I mean, us keeping it, yeah.
Well, us keeping it, but also in essence, asking for it in the first place.
The New York law case was between Airbnb and the city of New York, not from the, that was the problem, they wanted the data dumped by Airbnb, and that's why, it wasn't between the host and the...
But it's a similar, it's a similar concern, Donna.
But they also won a lot of cases.
The city saw it as a shortcut to get the information. Airbnb, certainly you must have what we most need to enforce.
Yeah, right.
That was the nature of the case, so...
It's not what we do in here.
That's not...
No.
Well, my, my only comment was, thank you for your input, but it still sounds to me that we need to have some sort of enforceable law, whether to prohibit or allow, I'm not sure what that answer is, but we have to have some sort of law to give us the enforcement capability.
Well, no, it sounds to me as if you're presently enforcing the current use code, and maybe you need to wait and see how that plays out.
I agree.
So, that we can let that go. Let whatever happens, happens, is what you're saying.
Well, if, if, if it's been decided that the current use, right, that...
She's...
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That just earned me one minute. I mean, I think you have, I think there's arguments, strong arguments to make on both sides. The opposition to creating the new law, I mean, you already do have the room rentals and the bed, and bed and breakfasts, and you clearly define what those are and how those can be enforced. So, what, what is the concern by creating a definition for a short-term rental? You put it on the same, you give your code enforcer the same tools he already has with regard to the room rentals and the Airbnb, and the bed and breakfast, so, but there, you're, it, I agree with you that if it's not in, if it's not a written permissible use, then it's not a permissible use, but you have to prove it's not a permissible use, so...
Right, so out of the three, I, I do have an appointment with one of the residents. I know for a fact it's an Airbnb, so my options are going to be to either cease and desist or try to go for a use variance. And so, you know, this could be case law, who knows? I mean, all over again, but, you know, this municipality is fast-tracking this issue and bringing it to light. I know other municipalities have, but locally, nobody has, and so, honestly, you know, the letters are going out tomorrow, and, and what's going to happen is, you know, they're going to have to try to comply again within another 30 days, or probably not, I'll have to look at the court calendar, but theoretically, they're going to have two options, and it's either go to court and, and let's try this, or you go for a use variance. Now, if it goes down in front of the EBA and they wind up issuing a use variance, that's going to be a whole other...
Issue.
You know what I mean?
Introducing more complicated code systems.
So, I, I think, I think there's two, there's two issues that I'm hearing. One is the efficacy of current law and whether an additional law is necessary, and then the second issue, which also came up, was should we hold a public hearing on this proposed law? And I, I am in favor of holding a public hearing. I feel like for a long time, we have been kind of chasing a butterfly, there's been a lot of, a lot of questions about what are we talking about, what's the definition, what are we doing? Public hearing doesn't mean the law gets passed, it means we have a public hearing. And I feel like for a lot of people, having something that we actually have pinned down, say, this is what we want to do, like it, don't like it, tell us what you think, I think is really important at this point, in some ways, to bring a bit of closure, because we've had a lot of discussions, a lot of definitions, clearly a group of people are, are, have been following this very closely, but I feel like, at least from a village-wide point of view, it is important to have one discussion about one definitive set of ideas that, that we can look at and talk about. So, I'm not surprised, but I feel like we've come this far, we've heard a lot of opinions, but we haven't had, we've been saying for a long time, we haven't had a draft law. Now that I've got a draft, I really would like to have people come and talk about this specifically, rather than various options, this is this, that is that, we have something that can be discussed in concrete terms, and would like to have that discussion.
So, a question about that draft law, because trustee Nunaker has put a lot of time into drawing an original proposal, and he was encouraged to talk to legal and try to resolve those differences. Would you like to have time for trustee Nunaker, which he has suggested, to try to resolve those differences on this draft law? That's my question to you, the board. You know, you want to give it, I don't, you tell me how much time if you want to do it, but I feel okay with letting Brandt have that discussion with our legal and try to come up with whatever that definition is, based on the work that he's done and the work that McCabe and Mack has done, to just see where that ends, see where that ends up.
I will see any problem with that personally.
Right, but it's still going forward with a draft law that we can at least get out and get public opinion, as I think trustee Lowitt said, let's get public opinion on a law versus public opinion about the, about the process.
In theory.
In theory. So, I would like to amend my motion to say that we allow trustee Nunaker to work with McCabe and Mack and come back with that... Nunaker to work with McCabe and Mack and come back with that combined draft proposal to the law and get that back in front of the board and give a date for that to be back from the board, so we have time to review it, and then we can, I hate to say this, but table this till next month, and we'll go forward with whatever they come out with.
I'd just like to say that I think that's a good idea, but I think we should aim at, you know, a final version, so to speak, with the understanding that the next step is a public hearing.
Okay, you can make a motion to amend that.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that.
Okay, all right. So currently, the motion, I'll repeat the motion, is to make sure is to, one, have Trusty Nunaker work with McCabe and Mack to work on his draft proposal and McCabe and Mack's proposal to make sure there's compromise or agreement on whatever those positions are, have that presented to us, give me a date.
Like, we shouldn't do it on our monthly meeting, so maybe the second Tuesday after that, six weeks from now, or is that too late?
It's going to take you six weeks to work that with.
Or five weeks? You said next month.
Well, no, I'd say for you to, I want a draft proposal from you and...
Oh, and in 10 days or two weeks?
All right, so within two weeks to have a draft proposal back to the board for us to review.
Right.
All right, with then at the review, that allows us two weeks to review, and at the next board meeting, we set a date for a public hearing based on that draft.
So I just want to clarify, since we're still commenting, I'm going to vote against this, but I'll be happily having to cooperate in the draft.
Okay, yeah, that's all right. Yeah, you put work into it, so I want, I want to recognize that work. All right, so do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so two weeks to give us a draft, okay?
Sure.
And then get it out to us.
Should I call Rich, or you, I mean, either way.
Right, why don't, I'll speak to Rich tomorrow, and we'll contact you, because we really have some miscommunication as to who owns what, so.
Right.
But, and I'm sure he'll have me work with you and that we'll put together, I'll put together...
My comments that I already have to, yeah.
Right, okay, so we'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for my influence that draft.
Sorry, can I have clarification? I know that you both know.
I already know as well, yeah. I'm against it.
I am too.
Okay, moving on. The next item is, so we're going backwards. I didn't mean backwards, but hospital medical district workshop update.
Okay.
Trusty, more time.
So, Trusty, so at last meeting, there seemed to be an impasse, but we did agree to take 45 calendar days to try and resolve or come to some sort of agreed-upon language, I would say, approach as well concerning the hospital medical district. And since that time, what I've done is started a process of building up to a revised language that I think might be workable, some sort of compromised language. It's really an extension of the process that, you know, started a law act, and what we're looking to do is engage the appropriate party. So I first started with John Fenton, and we'll work through interested parties at the hospital to come up with basically or resolve the contradictions, some of the issues that were basically holding us apart from a draft language that we could feel comfortable with and going to a public hearing. So John and I have met privately to go over some general principles concerning the preservation of our village character, aesthetic principles, but also some technical principles about how our zoning language currently exists and how it might be applied, and we're going to continue with a series of meetings to try and bring forward that language in a way that we feel is comfortable for both of us, but most importantly, represents the interest of the village.
Trusty Kozak, if I could ask, at the meeting, Mr. Mayor John Clark in particular had articulated that there were really two issues, and one was the height of the equipment that would go on top of the building, and John said that's not really even an issue, so it's really just the issue of the structures, the houses, and that's the one really major stumbling block left. Is that not the case? Is it more than that?
Well, actually, what I recall from that meeting was, quite frankly, some difference of opinion from John Clark and other members of the planning board.
So do you ensure that it is something that...
Yeah, I think, no, but you bring out a good point, which is, I think there needs to be some reconciliation about how the language should be written. Some felt that it was very site planning-specific, rather than a sort of general guidelines as a typical zoning code would be, and then there was the placement of the residences, but there was also issues about screening and the aesthetic effect of what could possibly evolve out of this. One of the things that I'm looking for, quite frankly, is a better understanding long-term, what the long-term plans of the hospital are, so that we can actually shape some language that is very useful.
I understand. You answered the question. I thought that it was just the...
A little bit more complex.
Fine, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item, what you just was the dark fiber. This was a, the Rhinebeck Central School District came forward, I don't remember how, several months ago, and had a request to install dark fiber, which is a fiber optic between the school, and wanted us to approve them to use the right-of-way buried cable out the back. They have since gone forward and have, and the board has seen this, basically come up with a proposal working with another vendor that basically changes that description, that allows them to work with the vendor and indeed use the poles, but they will take a different route and down our net, up Knollwood and to the school, where they would leave the school and come down and actually come out onto Market Street, and then go up through the woods to back up into the school, as they proposed, and run fiber on the poles, which is an approved usage and does not require any involvement of us to be able to regulate it out. So I just want to close this issue with the board that we no longer have to be involved with the school board moving forward to install dark fiber between, since it was brought forward. So any questions on that?
No, thank you. Good solution.
All right, Paul, is there anything else from the monthly report, building, planning, zoning?
It's just a recitation of, if I can find it really quickly, the activity on the board. Excuse me, there we go. A little bit of trouble with finding the document. But I'd like to submit into the record the activity, and I just submit the actual report rather than reading it.
Yes, you can, unless it's something of significance that you want to mention.
Yeah, that's all I mentioned.
Okay, Christine, I'd, you're free to leave. Christine, I would like, you do when?
September.
Very good, so I promised her I would get her out. I wouldn't make her stay for the whole meeting, so thank you so much for coming.
I was also told that, I wanted to make sure you had the vehicle and traffic.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
That seems to have...
Christine, can we jump forward to that?
Okay.
So that we can have that. You're right. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, so let's actually move forward to that, which is, under police and court, which is a vehicle and traffic law for, let me dig it out of my notes here. It's a vehicle traffic law that creates a loading zone within the village of Rhinebeck. Just to summarize, when Howie Trout was on the board, Howie and I worked together and surveyed the village looking for possible and potential loading zone places throughout the village to eliminate some of the congestion caused by trucks parking on our major thoroughfares and traffic and just to help, help the flow of the village is really the method. And in our various review of places, one place that came out, and I mentioned this last time, was using Garden Street as a loading zone for our trucks who are making deliveries. The Garden Street access makes a convenient place to access a major portion of the village, you know, to create that loading zone, and currently on the east side of that street, there is no parking today that is allowed. So this resolution, which I will read in, resolution number, wherever, 2019, whereas the attached amendments to Chapter 109 Vehicle and Traffic Code was introduced by the Board of Trustees to the village of Rhinebeck on May 14, 2019, and whereas a public hearing was held on June 11, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. at the Village Hall, 76 East Market Street, Rhinebeck, New York, notice of said hearing being duly published, and at which time all interested parties had an opportunity to be heard, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the village of Rhinebeck determined this action to be a Type II action based on the criteria found in six NYCRR number 617.5C16, and therefore has determined that there are no adverse environmental impacts associated with the adoption of this local law. And so have therefore enacted that the Board of Trustees of the village of Rhinebeck the following, village law of Rhinebeck Local Law Number Two of 2019 Vehicle and Traffic Regulation Amendments, deletion to Section 10945, Section 11, parking prohibited at all times. Name of the street, name of the street is Garden Street, the east side from the West Market Street to the cul-de-sac. In addition to the section of 10954 Schedule 20, loading zone would be Garden Street, east side from West Market Street to the cul-de-sac. So moving forward, this was presented to the board, and now a law, I would like to make a motion that we set a public hearing date on June 11, 2019, to discuss a loading zone for the village of Rhinebeck and Garden Street.
Second.
Any discussion?
John made me know, does the loading zone have a set of times attached to it? Do we have to do it here, or is that covered somewhere else?
I believe right now, we just have a section that's just reserved for loading. There's no definitions for it, so.
So do we need to put some time limits on this?
I'd have to ask legal. Can a, so right now, we have a provision or a section of the code that just reserves it. We're taking one section and plopping it to another. The only thing is, it just says loading zone, doesn't say when, where, what. So you could maybe amend the local law to allow these times, which would have to maybe be redone again, I guess.
Well, Mark could come out of a public hearing.
Right, you decide which times and how you want to do that.
Yeah, so, yeah, you would have to make that formally.
Just a question, is there a restriction as to, let's say, the type of vehicle or...
There is none of that right now, so.
Is that something worth considering as well?
I mean, most delivery trucks, they do come in various sizes. We get the full 10-wheelers.
Yeah, everything from pickup trucks to trailer trailers.
So it's really too tough to tell, you know. If you limit it axles, not so much truck size, but axles, it's going to be a negative impact to the stores, definitely.
And this is one area where, I believe, when with police and everybody else, was agreement that was on part of the review.
Okay. You know, what happened is this location actually morphed into a loading. The delivery drivers were like, you know what, we have no other choice. We're willing to take the tickets, and by the way, we're running over all your signs to say, no parking. So all we did was clean that up, and the best way, the best compromise is to just adopt it.
So right now, there's no parking at all?
There's no parking.
So that's going to continue to be the case if you're not in the loading, if you're not loading?
Correct.
Yeah, restricted to loading.
And nobody, the customers never park there.
Right, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? So carry. So the public hearing date will be at our next...
June 11.
June 11, October 4. Okay, next on the agenda, we'll go back now to Trezor's report, our dual role, Trevor Cameron Lawfan, who's taking minutes for us as well this evening. Thank you, Karen, and will now do the Trezor.
You're welcome. Good evening. The Trezor's report is for the period ending April 30. The tax collector's account ended the month with $379,064.2. The general fund ended the month with $157,529.84. The water fund ended the month with $237,426.43. The sewer fund ended the month with $619,648.58. Our New York class investments are yielding pretty well at 2.30 percent. The vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $37,596.11. In the water fund, $15,695.73. In the sewer fund, $23,916.20. We have a grant, some bills for the grant for the ADA lift in the amount of $3,212.23. A grant from the records management in the amount of $8,141.38. A grant for the highway shared services, which is the final payment of[1596.41][1596.43]$27,747.54. A grant for the water for the lagoon cleanout for $66,669.50. And the water main upgrade, $17,868.7. We just paid a bond for Astor Road expansion, $92,160. There's two more payments left, two more years of payments left on that, and two bills in the escrow account of $1,323.50. I'm sorry, that was a long list. We were very busy in the financial office this month. The monthly operating statements are uploaded on the cloud and are there for your review. The water and wastewater, the billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water and wastewater liaison and are presented for authorization.
I'd make a motion that we accept the water adjustments as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying?
And I would make a motion that we accept the wastewater figures as presented this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? Carry.
Okay, and I also just like to report that unpaid water and sewer bills have been re-leving on the tax bills, which has been sent out to the county for preparing the bills, and they will be sent out on June 1. Transfers, as for the adopted 1819 budgets, amounts were funded for transfer to capital projects in the following line items, the capital for fire, $25,000, capital discretes, $7,500, capital for police, $10,000, parks and rec, $10,000, and sidewalks, $15,000. When I make the transfers for these, I'll be making those transfers as well. The capital for water and sewer are to be determined, because I have to take into account all through the rest of the year and what we're transferring, so I don't have those exact amounts at this time. Budget amendments will be presented at the June meeting when we finalize the bills through the end of May 31. I started doing them all, and we're going to be doing another run of bills on May 31 at the end of our fiscal year, so we'll just do all of that at the June meeting. I also wanted to just report that the tax cap, the constitutional tax limit, and a copy of the 1920 village budget has been filed with the State Comptroller's Office.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, we'll go on to police report, which I will read into the record. This is for the month of April. Total number of incidents in the town was 20. Total number of incidents in the village, 127. Total number of tickets in the town, 16. Total number of... Total number of tickets in the village, 123. Number of arrests were 10. Total number of accidents were five. Our police force did do extra duty by covering for the land and kill, fish stocking, the National Drug Takeback Day, and Notre Dutch's Taste of Rhinebeck in the Treasury Report. So I thank you to them for their service. Court report, there's actually two. We were not able to read in the month of March. For March in the court, the tickets that were completed from both court sessions and mailed in for the month was 197, for revenue from the state of $5,914. For the month of April, tickets were completed both for both court sessions and mailed in for the month of 216. Revenue in the state was $5,315. Next would be the fire report, which I will get to very quickly here. For the month of, this is from our fire department. I first would like to, again, acknowledge the Frost Foundation for their generous donation to the Village of Rhinebeck for the new Jaws of Life. We have received a check from the Frost Foundation for, I believe it's in the range of $26,000 and change, and I'm very appreciative from the Frost Foundation for allowing us to provide that emergency services and upgrade our equipment in our fire department. When we get the Jaws, new Jaws in, I spoke to members of the Frost Foundation and the fire department. We're going to put them on display and kind of have a public opening, so, and invite the press to do it because it's kind of exciting for me. I don't know about you, but I kind of like it.
You should have a question.
All right, so for the month of April 2019, there were a total of 86 calls. There were 24 fire calls, 57 EMS calls, and five motor vehicle accidents. They responded to mutual aid departments 14 times, and the ambulance did not respond to 10 calls, so therefore the percentage was at 83.87%. Any questions on the fire? Moving on. Highway Department.
Okay. I have a monthly report. Basically, the Highway Department has been out doing its brush removal duties, been out delivering mulch, has started road repairs. We have kind of a contractor come in and start pothole repair on the 20th, 22 to the 24th. Also, the catch basin repair, and there's going to be a permanent installation made of the radar speed signs on Montgomery Street. Also, just want to note that debris should no longer be put on the street as of tomorrow. The yard waste and everything, it should cease. The Highway Department's going to be working to get the village in shape for the Memorial Day Parade, so instead of going out and picking up, they would like to be able to concentrate on other areas of the village. So with your cooperation, please stop putting materials out on the street for the next two weeks, and then we will resume regular pickup in June. So thank you for your cooperation with that. It just helps us keep the village looking tady for Memorial Day.
But they're going to do a sweep now.
They will do a sweep now, and then please stop.
That sweep is the end of this week?
It's going to run through the end of this week, but nothing else, I don't want to see.
Start on Wednesday, Wednesday, and be complete.
Start tomorrow.
The ask is that people put it out no later than tomorrow, so that they can get it, get it all.
Very good.
Okay. A couple of the small pieces of business and a larger one. I just want to let you know that we've got our CHIPS and Pave New York allocations for the year. We budgeted that number at $60,000. We actually received $67,438.19. That's between both CHIPS and Pave New York. And we've allocated $45,000 from our own budget, so we have $105,000, which to put towards paving this year and next. We've already had a discussion. The town is going to be working on Wine Coop Road this year, and so we have Wine Coop Road lines in and out of the village. The town is going to be paving our sections of Wine Coop Road and paying us back, or will be paying them back for the labor. Basically, it's all state rate, and that's pretty much set. We're looking at about $45,000, plus or minus, depends on time, materials, et cetera. We're also taking in bids right now for the paving of Locust Grove here on the west side of town. I believe two bids have been received.
We have our...
Okay, let the one come in, okay. So we'll be evaluating those bids and awarding them at the next meeting. So, all right, we'll see, but we need to see how to fix them with our overall budget. So it's a little update on paving. The other one is that we received a, I won't say it's a request, but received a shared services agreement between the village and New York State Department of Transportation. And basically, this would be in place for, what they said, to facilitate disaster assistance in case, in case the needs arise. Instead of having to wait for the governor to create a declaration of emergency, we could just go ahead and start working on shared services. We can share services. It lays out basically the amount of materials or equipment, who is responsible, provider shall, provider's employees shall, I may know, the full supervision and control of the provider. We are responsible for their pay and for all of their benefits. The one provision of the contract is actually different than Ulster County, is that if the machinery, borrowed machinery or equipment is damaged or otherwise needs repair arising out of, from a connection with the recipient's use, the recipient shall be responsible for such repairs. Just mention that in the Ulster agreement, if the equipment is being used under the supervision of, if the DOT sent a digger and a man to operate it in the Ulster County agreement, then they would say it's on DOT's responsibility to pay for it. In this case, DOT would say, even though it's our operator, our equipment, it's on your time, you're going to have to pay for the repair. So we can either, if we want, we can ratify this for either two or four years.
Can we ask to amend it, to be the same way?
We can, and we certainly can. Would you guys like to do that? I don't know if you know, I don't know if they'll...
I think this is generic.
Yeah.
It's a generic agreement between all the municipalities.
Right.
What generated this was when we had our bad snowstorm, I think it was on either St. Patty Day or something, and the DOT had to come in and help. And they were limited resources, but what happened was they lent out a lot of their equipment. Now, I don't know if all of them made it back a hundred percent, but that's what kind of triggered this type of agreement, so.
I believe we, we signed, good point, I believe we signed this agreement last year as well.
I think the, I think the terms have been modified.
Oh, and compared.
John, when they lent out the equipment, did they lend out operators as well, or did they...
No, not during that storm two, three years ago.
Okay, so that would be, we'd be...
And that's where the modification is, it's, it's been, the terms have been a little tweaked.
Gotcha.
And the liability has been shifted.
Touched. That's understandable. So do you want to make a motion?
I'm gonna...
Or do you want to do more work?
I'm just trying to think if we want to attempt to modify it for the operator. Do they, do they frequently, do they lend out operators or not?
No, they will, but, you know, I think if you're going to try to get them to modify, you have a better chance of not...
Flying.
You know, they're just not, they're not going to entertain it.
Fair enough, okay. I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal as written.
Second motion. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? So carry. Thank you, Detective. Okay. Water Department.
So the report from April, the low-lit pump station project is ongoing. I believe they're going to finish next week, and then we're going to do the part where we epoxy paint the basement in-house. The dredging continues. We're about full with the two bags, and the third bag has been delivered, which is filtration bag. I believe we're going to discover that we want to do more, because we have all the equipment mobilized. Informally, Peter Rossi suggested to the contractor that he might be able to do a fourth bag for like about $38,000 if he can push the material in sight, and I think that's a really good idea, but I'll come back to you guys on that.
I'd like to make comment, I was, because I was, I frequently do go visit all the departments. I was at the Water Department and looked at the low-lit pump stations and our dredging effort that was going on down there, and it's amazing how much they can take out, but it's amazing how much is there on both aspects. So how much has been accumulated over the time?
The bags aren't settling now, they're about seven feet tall.
Yeah, they're huge, they're absolutely huge. And the low-lit pump station is really coming along fine, and I'm glad to see that, which is really a protection for us, that the work that's going on to fortify that from possible sea level rise and superstorm-type situations from flooding and cutting off our water supply. So that's been a grant that we received from the state that we put together for exercising most of that, so it's exciting to see that all come to completion.
Sure. The large water line project, we went out to bid on that. We had, just so everyone knows, we had a workshop, Q&amp;A workshop, so that would be on, that's our May 9 meeting. So that's, if residents have questions about that in the affected area, which is Montgomery, Livingston, Chestnut, and Platt, that would be on Panda, so encourage folks to watch that. The notice went out on the 9th for the water line bid, and we're going to open the bids on June 3. And there will be a construction meeting for people in the, in the construction discipline that want, that are bidding on it, so. Aside from that normal maintenance, we had a potassium permanganate line that was repaired that goes all the way out into the river at the intake, which is about 700 feet from the shoreline, so. Oh, and I gave you guys...
Before you go, can I jump back to our water infrastructure? Because one, out of our workshop that we had on May 9, there was an input from the public that talked about having a way to communicate and move forward. You know, we discussed various ways, and I know Grant you offered to be able to communicate and put some couple of lines on. I've been in, I thought that was a great idea, so that we have a way to give daily updates to people and/or answer their questions. So I met with John, and we discussed an option of having, for lack of a better term, a citizen's communicator, right? I don't know what we want to call it, we're just making up a term. But we do have a person that has worked with us before by the name of Pat Evans, who has volunteered his time voluntarily to assist with John and be, you know, kind of a go-between for the project and John and the community to be able to go out and provide this information and, you know, so therefore it would be somebody that could take the volume of calls that are coming in. They will work, he will know us a lot about what's going on, be able to work with John, to be able to communicate that and make updates to our website. We talked to Superior about putting in a hotline, which is doable, so that we can have a special number that people can call into, and we're working with the webmaster to see if we can create a link that people can go to to find out, you know, whatever information is also available of that. So I'm appreciative of our volunteers in the community who want to help us and be that communication, so I'd like to ask the Board, if that's what Board is agreement, to be able to have Pat work in that capacity to be a, just a go-between for a lot of, for a lot of people.
If John wants to do it that way, that's fine. I have some concerns about playing telephone with, we're going to have people out, we're going to have the contractor, we're going to have the inspection, the inspection people, we're going to have our engineer, then John, and then me, and I don't want this person to get confused about progress and then, I mean...
I understand your concerns. I think that if we bring Pat Evans into fold early enough, get him familiar with the entire project, have him jump on board when we actually start to roll this out. And, you know, basically, Pat Evans is going to be the other end of a phone line, probably sitting in that room, answering just messages and phone calls. It just takes the burden off of my department and the Water Department.
Right, I understand. Yeah, we're going to be really, it's going to be a lot.
Does the, does the, like, the project engineer or someone produce actually a formal report that could be a script for Pat Evans?
We're going to need something like that.
Yeah, normally we do. Usually what happens is, well, the contractor's wanting to pay, so there has to be a descriptive scope of work.
Right.
And so that piece of paper is usually what you can...
I mean, it sounds like a great idea, all I'm saying, to your good point is, you know, just having, here's the script, this is, you know, where we're at, so there's no confusion coming from anybody. I think that would be...
I mean, as an example, maybe we're at 19, 19 Chestnut Street tomorrow.
Right.
Please be prepared that, you know, your...
Exactly, it's a project plan and then a report.
And so somebody can call in and know immediately, hey, we're, who's going to be impacted at what time.
That would just turn it fine.
It's more of a glow, not technical, right? Because he's not going to play the role of technical to be able to answer that. It's a, so I call it a citizen's communication, to be able to relay information that comes from the technical people so that it can be put on.
And also, if our contractors, you know, got enough, you know, charisma or whatever to spend time with folks and they understand that public relations piece, that's going to be tremendously helpful. We don't even know who that contractor's going to be.
We do not, but this is, I think, I thought was a good...
I never laugh, just because that's never going to happen. But I mean, you know, meanwhile...
Just a little...
Is that on the bid? Are you guys...
It's on the bid package, yes.
You know, these guys, these guys are going to be working under serious pressure with traffic and time-wise, and, you know, and the thing is, you know, they're going to be in the hole, you know? And the thing is, and we'll have to have a lot of perimeter safety precautions and what have you. We're going to have residents walk up to a ditch, but we're going to have somebody there to address them. And basically, for the most part, we can feed that resident enough information to make them feel satisfied, but I think Pat Evans, having the nuts and bolts and the real hardcore of where we're at and where we're going is pretty important.
Is it possible to have, you know, or tell our engineering firm, or have our engineering firm identify a person that Pat could go to and say, okay, this is the report, this is what you're going to work from? That would be helpful. I don't think it will come from the contractor.
No, but what we have, so every job, like, for instance, even with this vertical lift, we have a schedule, a work schedule. And so it gives a timeframe, and so what happens is, we'll have a group of people on an email chain, and it'll be a work in progress. And so for the most part, the contractors and the GC, everybody will update that chart. Pat Evans will have access to that chart, and so he can just say, okay, well, all right, you're going on vacation, when, you come back? Well, we'll be there probably about a week after or whatever, so.
Or if it changes.
So it'll be actual time, you know.
I don't think we need to vote on this, but I just would like to have, you know, just your concurrence that this is something we can put in place, and I will then communicate this to Pat and John, who's already here, and we can, he can actually get engaged, he's ready to get engaged right away.
Okay.
Okay? So, thank you, Pat. We appreciate your help.
So the last thing is the, I had emailed, or Karen had emailed you the, this Blue Earth product, which is, there was an image there, there's a bunch of pages in that. I just wanted you to look at like the first two pages of that, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. But there was a photograph of this acid, acidic wash, it's the Blue Earth product on the side of the sand filter, and there's a biofilm on there that can't, that they haven't been able to remove, you know, with bleach and things like that, but this thing just wipes it all out. So that's what this Blue Earth product is, and it's $1,200, so if you get 15 gallons. So I just wanted to get approval on buying this Blue Earth product.
Yeah, it'll come out of the water budget, it's not a special expense, so, if you saw the picture, it was amazing what it did.
See, only thing he's found to remove this, and then we're going to, we'll talk about maybe cleaning the media bed later, or replenishing it or replacing it altogether, but that's, I didn't want you guys to get distracted with all that with that email, but, so I'd like to get approval on buying this Blue Earth.
I don't think the product came from Chernobyl, right?
Sounds good. I actually looked at the last page and the pictures, and there's some sort of approval from 2000... from two thousand fourteen or fifteen. I don't know whether that's any, but it just struck me as, and it's actually in the last-
For the Blue Earth or for the, for the age, for the media?
Oh, maybe that's what it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the sand and turtle on the bed, but-
Okay.
We'll get to that later.
Thank you, that was everything.
Waste water.
Oh, did we, I'd like to get a resolution.
You had a vote on that?
Yeah, yeah. It's a twelve hundred dollar spend.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? So, Karen. Waste water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll review up the top line numbers and then I'll try and move through the couple of items as quick as possible. Waste water treated, three point nine million gallons, gallons of sledge processed, thirty thousand gallons, I'm sorry, pounds of sledge processed, three thousand five hundred and sixty-one pounds, almost two tons. Couple of things that I wanna bring the entire board up to, or familiar with, Mr. Mayor, is about, I think it was a November meeting, we had a constituent resident from Wells Manor speak before the board, expressing concerns about odors that were unpleasant and having implications for the neighbors, her neighbors and families at Wells Manor. She made some phone calls just recently, rightfully so, hey, can you give me an update? And I spoke to her a couple of times, and I've met with our plant supervisor, Brian Macama. And Brian had a conversation with this resident as well. By the way, she really appreciated his insight and patience. We wanna try low-cost approaches first, and what, one of the things that potentially could be the, an issue is the lift pump that funnels sewage from the woods over to our point of connection, and that specific manhole can be, can be ripe with odors. And Brian has found a solution that's about five hundred dollars, five hundred and fifty dollars, it's a copper, sorry, it's a filter that would be placed down inside the manhole. We're gonna move forward and do it, but we're gonna wait until the budget cycle for, you know, the current fiscal year fully ends. And then of course, we may be some other additional items that we, we need to, you know, consider. But, and at the moment, you know, the folks are pleased that we're working with them and trying to find a solution. I'm gonna jump to probably what is the single biggest thing, and particularly since I have the benefit of having zoning enforcement officer here, and that is the Grasmere project, which John and, and Brian and I met last week, and it was really my first introduction to the scope and breadth of this project. To put it into perspective, we're currently managing a hundred and forty thousand gallons a day of sewage into the plant. It's anticipated conservatively that Grasmere will bring in seventy thousand by itself. And what we wanna be able to do, and I, John, I encourage you to jump in, because I'm guessing that the mayor and the trustees probably aren't quite as familiar with it, or probably more familiar than me, but this sounds like it's pretty imminent and even shovel-ready.
Right now, this project, it's a hotel resort facility, it's in front of the town of Rybex, planning the zoning process. They anticipate approvals to go through, it's not shovel-ready, but it's getting there, probably October twenty nineteen. October, maybe early November. If weather permits, they, Grasmere wanted to start the production immediately. Again, worst case, you're probably looking at spring of twenty twenty. You know, they're anticipating installing a lift station of a pretty substantial magnitude into a forced main directly up Route nine, and where it connects to the American Legion wall, it'll be gravity-fed down to the plant. So what we're dealing with right now is, we're dealing with a user who is potentially gonna produce almost half of what we have now. What that would require is, we do, you know, one, I think, you know, I don't wanna step over my bounds either, we do need a consultant on board to kind of walk us through this, but just speaking informally, it looks like we would have to upgrade the plant to allow that much waste to be stored on site. To do that, you would have to install one, maybe two equalization tanks, and be able to hold that additional waste. What you have right now is, we have a plant that operates at peak hours, you know, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And say, peak is eight out of ten, and then the off-peak is more like two or three. When, when you're running almost at full tilt and you're holding on to that much waste, you're gonna run at a higher level consistently. And, and what allows us to do that is the equalization tanks, which is gonna segue into, basically, we are now a classified two A with the additional. Correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, because you know probably more than I do on this one, but what's gonna happen is, those equalization tanks do, are actually part of a factor with a number rating, which basically, we're on a teeter right now with a two A to a three A. Any additional equipment, like equalization tanks, the equipment that run it and so on, will most likely take us over to the three A level. So that's where we're at.
So this, go ahead.
Well, just for clarity, the project is in the town, and the town planning and zoning are involved in the actual regulation of it. Our, our contribution is handling their waste.
That's correct.
And water. I assume there's water input as well.
Yes.
Because there's like a two in that line, I know, running to that facility now.
Right. And so, you know, right now, the water's already there, it's not a concern. They may have to modify, they're gonna modify the size of the line, put a backflow preventer, they'll update their water supply.
But at that capacity, we need to look at a capacity-
Well, right now, so Grasmere's been tackling this thing for years, and, and to build an onsite facility, a treatment facility, is financially out of their scope. And so the other alternative is to send it us.
Does the waste stream-
Yes.
Right. So they would, they would be essentially building, custom building all these facilities?
They'll be financially responsible for dealing with pretty much what they need to build to get it to us, and to basically financially support us to be able to handle that additional-
So the equalization tanks, the line-
And so we're not, so we're not actually at that point yet. I'm kinda talking out of legal a bit, but there have been, from our last discussion with Mike Trumper, it's like, well, our plant right now isn't equipped to handle, you know, your demand, we would need to do this, 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 and this. And, and in a roundabout way, financially, we don't have that money to do that.
So my question, okay.
No, I was just going to ask, if you know, to elaborate on what you mean by financial, I mean, what type, in terms of actually usage fees or in terms of actually capital investment?
No, with respect to equipment, the actual physical equipment to handle their, their capacity. So we don't, we're not, I don't, we don't have any budget line, any, any equipment line to install two equalization tanks, the equipment that comes along with it.
That's, yeah.
Right. And so-
That's what we're looking for, and that's for them to come up with the funds in order to have us install that.
Okay. Even, even as far as to come up with, you know, in the beginning stages, we need escrow, because we have to pay our consultants, our engineers to review things. So, but again, they're, they're not there yet-
No, no.
But it's something definitely coming down the line. This project is not going anywhere. It's, it's coming to us. And, and so-
John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the site plan approval from the town had a contingency that this, that waste management had to be-
Correct. Yeah, that's my question. I mean, this should be part of, our acceptance of this should be part of them moving forward.
So they haven't got to that stage yet.
Okay.
They're in the process of it. So I think the next round is a continuous public hearing. They're still going through their public hearings still. It's, it's a lot going back and forth.
I haven't seen a public hearing posted on it.
And this is why I'm going off what Grasmere, actually, I'm going off of what George Roden has in their attorney told me. So he's, he's telling me that there's public hearings.
So how would we normally do this? I would believe that they would hire an engineer to represent, that would represent us and be participating in these discussions, so that we have-
Well, we've done this differently too. When the hospital, the expansion, we requested that they do a capacity analysis, and we use Brinear and Larios, but then we held money in escrow, and they paid Brinear and Larios.
Yeah, that's what, that's your-
Yeah, that's when we have the capacity.
Or they could do it directly, but I just wanted to say that Brinear and Larios did the plant, they built the original plant, so you might wanna look into using them for this.
Well, so right now, they have their own engineer, Josh O'Connor. He's the one that's basically has kept the correspondence between Grasmere and ourselves. And he, and again, this is very early stages.
Right, right.
You know, we just, this thing had just, we just met a week or two ago. So we're trying to formulate some type of committee team.
A task force, of course, that would be interfacing with, with the Grasmere representatives, obviously John, Brian, myself as liaison, but we'd also like to include Mike Trumper.
And Karen, and, you know-
Just so you know, we're doing this now. With the, with regard to the gardens, when they did the phase two, three, four, whatever, we, they're paying full freight on the bond debt that we had for the plant expansion, because the plant expansion was due because of the gardens. So we have a letter of credit from them, we pay the bond, then we can, we-
We bonded it and they pay us every year.
They pay us, and if they, if they defaulted, which would never happen, but we could go to the letter of credit.
And that's probably the fully same way we would handle this.
But to do that, we need to get through that engineering design, capital sizing, blah, blah.
Which they're working on already.
Right. So I don't know if a task force represents that portion of the work.
Uh, probably not. I mean, you know, again, the ball's in their court, we don't even see, we haven't seen their product yet.
Right.
We have nothing to work off of.
So at some point, we need, at some point, we need a deliverable from them-
Yes.
To move forward on.
Yeah. I mean, other than, you know, aerial shots and stuff like that, we don't even have a draft of anything yet. And so the thing, but we wanna be equipped, we wanna be ready to handle that. So, you know, at some point, when they do come to us, you know, I like to have a consultant and, and, you know, another engineer represent us.
Why don't we request to them now that, to give us the money to hire an engineer to do this?
And they're prepared for that. They understand, so I talked to the attorney today, he was actually gonna come here. I didn't think, I didn't think this was gonna be really formal, and so we just wanted to get the info out. He was gonna represent Grasmere and answer any questions. If you wanna maybe put it on next month's agenda, and then we-
I don't know enough about it.
Yeah, so we could, if you wanna maybe put it on next month's agenda.
Yeah, I think we should, and-
What do you think? I mean-
If it's a right issue at that point, if it's all preliminary, then we're just talking about the future right now.
But it's not. It's, they, there's a draft, there's a draft.
I'm sorry.
We can, she's allowed it.
I just, I'd feel much more comfortable if, you know, we had basically give them some notice that, you know, this is what we need in order to proceed to get the ball rolling and put them on notice that, you know, there's this first step that they need to respond to, basically give us some outline of what's, what's gonna happen, and, you know, these are the things that we're going to need, even in some high-level form.
Well, certainly, those are, those are the intentions, those are the strides that we make. What we wanted to share obviously was, this is happening, and John is the interface, we wanna have a bit of a task force, a flack of a better way to characterize it, you know, working with John. But, but more than anything, we're, we're gonna tilt towards a three A plant. In addition to this-
That's a bigger complicated, I realize.
Well, let's not forget, we also-
We don't have a three A operator.
Well, you gotta keep up with the glasses, though.
No, no, we've just- And that segues into, can, would the board approve for our two A operator to seek out a three A?
All the more why I think we need an engineer to get involved to represent us, you know, to-
And that's gonna kind of segue into something else. You know, I know that the board was possibly thinking about RFP for professional services. Are we still at that point? Are we considering engineering? Because, because there's a lot, there's a lot of pieces moving, and, and there's some engineering firms that are local that are ideal for this, and so there's a lot going on here. And I know that you have a lot on your plate, but if, you know, you know, would you want me to use the existing engineering firm that we use, or do we outsource it to another firm that may be up their alley?
I agree. I think this needs to go to a specialty where-
Yeah, that's what I mentioned, yeah.
Karen, you probably have an opinion on engineering firms?
I think just get an environmental system engineer that specializes in waste treatment.
All right. But we want them to cover that cost, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we wanna go, we wanna, we wanna seek an, I think we wanna seek an engineering firm to represent us to be able to give them all the-
I have, I have a, a sort of, a sort of off-base but related question. Can we make them build a sidewalk from, from Mill, from Mill, from Mill to the-
I don't think we can make them do anything in the town, in the village we can.
In the village.
We don't have any jurisdiction. Unless you like, build it on top of our baseline.
But it would be really nice, I mean, it would be really nice to have a sidewalk that connected to the village.
At the moment, I'm mostly concerned with what's gonna be on the-
I know, I know, I know, but I'm saying, but we have, we have, we have a hand here, and it's something we could use, it's something that we could use.
So I'd love, in order, it's going on ten, let's, let's move forward. I believe everybody's in agreement that we need to get an engineer, and so, John, let's, I think we need to seek a specialty in this case, which I think we're allowed to do.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if we wanna take an interview process or whatever, but there are several that can do this.
Again, the goal here was, this letter that John received, this is very recent, that's where we met, and so we have to bring this to the board, this is a big deal.
Good question.
But in addition, please, don't lose sight of the fact that the MIR rule is coming on, and that's gonna be eleven thousand down for today, and, and as the rest of the work completes on, on the gardens. So again, we're moving towards a three A, that's part of the message here tonight, and I'm confident that Brian will be ready by the end of this year, at worst, by the end of December.
I just wanna point out that it's in, it is in the village. It's all in the village. It's Mill Street to, up Route nine, that's the village.
Trustee Lou would-
We're gonna take this into consideration anyway, it's not a job.
All right, so moving on, the next step is, John, I want you to establish a relation, so figure out a process for us to, you know, select an engineering firm.
And then the last thing was, can I, is it okay if I reinstate the inter-agreement, or not the inter-agreement, the agreement with Mike Trumper? I know that we had terminated it since we didn't need their services for the three A. Not that we would pay out of village funds, but if I'm able to secure escrow, am I, can I go to him for-
What role would he play? Outside of an engineering firm?
Um, well, okay, he wouldn't then, at that point, right.
Waste water.
Yeah, so I guess, right. It was maybe an interim-
I think we gotta go straight to engineering.
Okay, that's fine, that's good. All right.
My opinion.
No, I, you know, if we're gonna do it, let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, okay.
John, thanks. Those are the major points we wanted to cover. Unfortunately, I still have a couple more things, Mr. Mayor. One is, what I'm sharing with you is images I took out at the plant today. We really need to consider having this apron repaired.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So we've gotten, this was underway, this project, and we've gotten two bids that are from the fall. One was for forty-four thousand, one was for twenty-seven thousand, Stat, and that's the company that we prefer. We tried to get a third bid, or there has been an effort to get a third bid from Jeff Decker, we haven't been able to surmise that. But I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the code says, you know, as long as we're under forty thousand, we get the due diligence for the three bids. I'm not bringing it to, much like Brent, this evening, I'm gonna, we're gonna make sure that the bid for the twenty-seven thousand, which was, I think, was in October, is still viable, and then I'll bring it back to, you know, to the board, but we would wanna do that.
So do we have to go out for an RFP for the community amount? So, do we have to go out for an RFP for the community amount?
An R, well, an RFP means...
39,000.
You can ask for three or four bids.
Right, I think it's 35,000.
35,000.
35, yeah, 34,999.
Right.
So, but we're below that.
Oh.
Then they can just get close.
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, listen, and then the last thing, and we can, can move on, is I do want the board to know that I may be the only person in the village that wasn't aware of Karen's other role in the administration and board of Tri Muti. And Karen has incredible knowledge in this area, besides being so expert and skilled in financials, has invited myself and Brian to, to do a tour, a short visit out there next week, and we're going to be taking her up on that offer.
Absolutely.
And that is it. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so in the essence of, essence of time, we do have another person here that I've been hanging on very diligently, so I'd like to move forward and talk about Porch Fest.
Oh.
And so, that would allow our guest to leave, if he wanted to leave, okay? Apologize for such lengthy time and appreciate you wanting to hang in there, but we'll get back to the rest, but if you're, if you're open, I'd like to jump in. Do you want to say anything about Porch Fest?
Um, no.
Come up and be on tape. By the way, this is one of three citizens of the year, or women, that were selected as citizens of the year last night by our Rhinebeck Rotary Club. So, congratulations. Very well deserved.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Porch Fest this year, there's been a little concern because of the water project. I was at the meeting, I think it was last week. And it's my understanding that we're going to be able to move forward, that there aren't going to be any safety, my, my primary concern is safety.
Ask, ask.
So, I, I don't know what, you know, we don't even know who's doing this yet, so I don't quite...
Or do we have a schedule yet?
Right.
Yeah.
So, I just don't want to start moving forward anywhere in the process of creating this event if, you know, we're going to, you know, be stumbling upon...
Well, we definitely had Porch Fest on the, going out the bid that said, can't do anything during Porch Fest. And it has to be a safe, secure space on all the streets where Porch Fest is being held.
So, then...
So, I think you're good. I, from a construction point of view, I think you're okay. It's part of the bid package.
Okay. Then that's one. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, three, a month from now, we're going to...
Covered over ditches and, and everything, but it will be safe.
Okay. Because we're already getting sponsorships in and people are excited about the event, and I just want to, you know, keep moving forward. I've been hesitating to do that, so...
We can put the advertising banners on the excavators.
I agree with you. Okay, so, thank you.
All right, so there is a event application by Ms. Montarella from 19, Chatham Street to hold Porch Fest on Saturday, September 28th.
Correct.
Right? And it'll be at the same locations as last year, from what I understand, even though the event application says TBD. I didn't get an update today.
I changed it today.
But we, I didn't see it, so that's fine. But it's, from what I understand, it's the same locations as last year, including Mulberry, right, for everything else.
It's the same locations as last year, but what we are doing is we're, the first year that we held the event, we used Platte, and I talked to Pete Dunn about opening Platte backup for porch music. And from Route 9 to Mulberry. So, same as last year, but we are once again going to use Platte.
Oh, okay. And I know Pete has, Sergeant Dunn, I'll use it formally, has approved.
Yes.
And I spoke to Chief Kyle Amy today, who has also given his occurrence of approval. So, I would like to make a motion that we...
Before you do that, there's just one more change that's happening this year. I just want to make sure everyone's on board. Last year, we did the grand finale in the municipal lot.
That's great.
It was great, but it was, it was difficult to...
Marshall the paper.
Coordinate.
Yeah.
So, I had thought that instead of doing it in the municipal lot this year, maybe we do it, I spoke to Andy and Barati about that corner parking area, Platte and Mulberry, creating a stage there for the finale. I just think it's a much safer event. You don't have, and I know the village was concerned about parking, and some of the shops and restaurants. I mean, the whole idea was to get people back into the village after the event, but we kind of ran into a lot of issues in that regard.
And, and the fairgrounds is approved, I assume.
He said as long as everyone else is on board, he's fine. There is no electricity in that lot, so we have to figure out how to, how to work around that.
And you're also using the fairgrounds for parking.
Well, he's always let us use the two lots.
Yes.
And one lot always remained practically empty. So, we're just going to shift everything to that one.
Okay. All right, great. So, again, I'd like to make a motion to approve Porch Fest event for September 28th.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So, Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, goodnight.
We're going to jump to committee reports. I'm going to give somebody a quick, the office and support committee. I have no formal report. We're actively working to get pledges in, so hopefully next, at the end of next month, we'll be out, accumulation of where we are as we have that. So, no other news on office. Tree committee.
I would say very briefly that we had a terrific planting of 21 trees on Arbor Day, which was Saturday, April 21st, with a wonderful turnout from the Interact Club. Our recording secretary is in Florida. So, I have a full list of participants and all the people who contributed food and other things at the next meeting. But it was really a terrific event, and it's amazing that we can get, I think we had 30-plus people turn out. And we put trees up everywhere from the entrance of the village on Route 388, near 308, near the mobile station, into the Legion Park, at the high school, over at the south end of the village by Matchbox and Dr. Whitman's office. These trees hopefully will be here for decades, beautifying our village. It's a wonderful event, and it went very well.
No environmental committee report this month. The meeting was postponed due to conflicting stuff, so we'll move to the parks committee.
No report.
No report. Emergency preparedness committee, I'll read the report. I, I think the most thing of significance on this report is, we've released information about a citizen's preparedness training to be held here in Rhinebeck. There's multiple training throughout the county, and this is scheduled from June, they're going on from June 13th to June 27th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. There is a shift. It was scheduled for town hall, and this training will now take place at village hall. So, we will solicit a new flyer for that to make sure that everybody's aware that there's a change from town hall to village hall for that. So, again, the emergency preparedness committee is meeting on a regular basis and continuing to work towards building, you know, emergency responses for our community. Ethics committee.
Okay, two items. The first item is, ethics committee member Gina Fox has completed her term and is willing to serve for another three-year term. I spoke with Carol Urban, the chairwoman. Her response is, there's no objection, which is, ethics speak for, that's fine. And would you permission, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Gina Fox to the ethics board for a three-year term. Second?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Tell Gina congratulations.
Okay.
Back on board.
Back on board. So, the second issue is a little bit more complicated. It came, just take it from the top. It came to light that we had amended the ethics code law on July 25th, 2017, which is actually the day you were sworn in.
Yes.
The first day. And I'm actually the person who made the motion. We were attempting to harmonize our ethics code law with the state ethics code law. And unfortunately, in the transmission of, from the, from our meeting to the actual code book as written, there was a mistake made. So, Pat Coon, the village clerk, called up NICOM, who basically said, there, there is no mulligan rule. You can't just say, oops, we made a mistake, we'll change it. So, we must have, we have to do the full process of amending the law, because it's as it is written, and then do all that stuff. So, at the end of this, I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing. This would be the motion that I want to make. We're talking about, if you guys want to follow along, section 618, this is in chapter six, section 618, the code of ethics. And under there, we had wanted to amend the motion so that it says, "No ethics board member shall be an officer in a political party. No ethics board member shall be employed or act as lobbyist in the village." That was the language we were shooting for. We've got that language. However, there was other language that needed to be struck, and that language was not struck. So, what I'd like to make a motion is to strike, you know, excuse me, I'd like to motion to amend 618C, to strike the sentence, "An ethics board member may make campaign contributions but may not participate in a village or town election campaign except as a candidate." Those words would be struck from the law. And then the law would read in its entirety, "No ethics board member shall be an officer in a political party. No ethics board member shall be employed or act as a lobbyist in the village." So, it's basically cleaning up, it brings us actually back to our original intention of what we wanted to do. And hopefully that would supply some clarity. So, we do need to have a public hearing. So, I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing at our next village board meeting on the 11th. I want to make sure it's correct.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, June 11th.
Seconded.
Okay. Any additional...
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So, Carrie?
Do you want to make it, do you want to make that at 7:30 and then make the other public hearing, the VNT public hearing at 7 o'clock? Or do you just want to make them both, put them both in at 7 and you'll just go through them both?
I think what you should do is set a separate time. I think it's appropriate.
You want to do 7, 7:30?
Seven, 7:30.
Okay.
We may run ahead and...
Then we just talk about it.
At least we're going to promote a time.
So, Karen, there's the language, the exact language to strike it to.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, next is the, oh, excuse me, before you end the committee, for some reason, the veterans committee was left off of the report. I would like to just very announce that we do have a new member to the veterans committee, and it's Brenda Clapproth, who has joined us. And so, I'd like to make a motion to add Brenda Clapproth to the ongoing veterans committee.
That's okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? So, Carrie? Just to summarize, our workshop on May 9th, because it was a time-dependent thing, the American Legion asked if the village would pick up the cost for the additionally insured for the Memorial Day Parade. At that meeting, we made a motion to approve for up to $300 for additional assured, for they can submit the DOT application for the Memorial Day Parade. So, that motion was passed and accepted. We received a letter from the Legion this week, and I believe we're in the process of creating a check to give to them for that. The war dog program, it's the US War Dog Memorial, there is a person that's in charge of war dogs, and there's a president that will help us with these care, care packages. And this is something that the committee decided they wanted to do on a very small number, you know, a couple of dogs, you know, and their handlers, to be able to take care packages and be able to provide additional support. And so, we're still working with trying to identify these war dogs and try to pick some. And we anticipate the cost of a care package to be in the range of $40, and we would be working with local people and places to collect money, you know, to donate money to be able to help us buy the, whatever is needed in the kit. We haven't defined what's an extra kit, but that's in, in process. So, again, so that's moving on. And the American Legion Park, I also asked the committee if they would be interested in taking on a project. And the project is the, really the, I'm going to call it the beautification of the American Legion Park that we have down at, the American Legion Park, where we have a flagpole and we have a stone feeder with a nice plaque on it. It needs work, right? And so, they agreed that that's a great project and to get other organizations involved. There's no other definition into what we're going to do, or how we're going to do it. But I think we're gearing up to move forward and try to define how we can make that as an entrance to our village, you know, to look at, make it nice, make it nice and respectable for, as our American Legion Veterans Memorial.
That's great potential, no question.
Yeah, fantastic. So, that's, stay tuned, there'll be a lot more on that. So, that's it for the committee. Mayor Gary Dazza, Chair of the, of that committee. So, the great committee, the next is, I don't know if you have anything else on, do you have, you can lead and then I'll follow.
Yeah, because you have good views. Always better, best thing is to have an approved grant. The next person is that we've got one in the pipeline. Hey, we, we received a letter, correspondence of rejection. Actually, it was addressed to me from the Department of Transportation. We did not receive the 3.1 million dollar grant that we had hoped for. Had the opportunity to call the Department of Transportation and discuss with three different representatives, Peter Ryan, Paul Krepler, and Lisa Floyd. All very gracious, very patient, gave you a lot of time on the phone. Mr. Mayor, I won't go through all the bullet points. I'm not, by the way, discouraged about any of it. It was good insight, it was good commentary. You know, one of the things that, that hurt us was they, they didn't feel that, they didn't feel that we had estimated, that we were too conservative in our estimates of the cost of this project. We, now again, we were asking for 3.1 million, but the total project was 3.7, 3.75. They also said we really want shovel-ready projects. I do actually remember that, when you and I went to the, the training, the workshop down in Poughkeepsie last June. We were looking for another grant to offset the cost that we would have been at a bad, if we got the grant, right? So, it was 3.7 million project. Let's say we got the 8% from the Department of Transportation. That would have left us with 20%, which is about $800,000. And we felt it was very prudent to find another grant to at least pick up some of that. And we did. And that was one of our CFA regional economic development grants from last year. That was held against us. They said, you were relying on monies that you did not have. I didn't say, but Gary, that was, we did bring that question up when we were down in Poughkeepsie at the training. We said, should we actually look to collaborate with this grant with others? Yes, you should do that. The biggest thing that hurt us was that all of this was about reducing emissions and tied to more children walking to school. And we had, every applicant had a template, a formula that you had to work with to demonstrate, well, if we have more children walking, there will be less parents riding to school, and that will translate into reduced emissions. And they said, your number just wasn't an impressive number. In fairness to us, we have a district where the majority of children are not in walking distance. They're never going to be able to walk to school. And we have busing. So, we were, the district where my kids went to school on Long Island, it was 1,300 children in, in the school district, it's a K through six elementary district. Everybody was within walking distance, and there was no busing. So, that's where, so everyone was getting dropped off. You know, that's what we're competing against. And those urban, whether it's Poughkeepsie or suburban areas with this lot of car transportation schools, doesn't mean that we don't try again. We should. This will come up, as we know, every two years. And, you know, now we're approaching the, the next grant window, which is the, the CFA regional economic development. I'm looking at Dinah, because we're scheduled to go down to one of the workshops, the heavy one in Barris, in the middle of June. And, Mr. Mayor, I know that you talked about Kingston, and you're correct, Kingston did receive monies in 2017 for sidewalks. It was a, it was not a small amount, it was, you know, it was $750,000. A small project, obviously, than, than what we were doing. I guess you could say significantly smaller. But, you know, we, we certainly would be open to, you know, any conversation that we can have with them. Interesting, that grant came through the community smart, the climate smart community. It was a CSC grant, and it was 50%. So, that's, that's certainly worth looking into. So, we'll, we'll have to have more conversations... So, we'll have to have more conversation about that. And that's, the one area that I do want to just mention quickly is that I do think that we should consider grants in the water department and the wastewater department. Why? Because the underwriting agencies of those grants tend to be 50, 60%. And as Trustee Munger can point out, we've been pretty successful, you know, between the pump, I mean, the lift station, and obviously, you know, the water man. So, that might be a good place for us to continue to play and pursue. We'll know more after we go through the training. Thank you, that's it.
All right, so in addition to that.
Oh, yes.
What did we discuss the last board meeting? Was the county came out with the, the Dutchess County MIG application update, which was due on May 3rd. We discussed various things, and we decided to go forward with a grant for crosswalks. And this is a grant for improving making ADA-approved crosswalks at what we know is Terrapin Restaurant and the other one here at Brett Alone. And so, with that grant, I worked with our engineering firm and helped them define the definition of that grant that basically says, you know, it's an activity to increase accessibility in a two-mid block crosswalk in the village by installing audible beacons and what's called rectangular rapid flashing beacons at those crosswalks. The audible beacons will increase access by visually disabled individuals, you know, by providing directional orientation through the emitting of sound from across the street. And so, as I mentioned, the place where the crosswalks are. As a significant of this, one of the things I did was reach out and find out what our traffic volumes are, just out of curiosity. And the average daily traffic volume at Marcus Street Crosswalk is 5,966 vehicles. And at the Route 9 crosswalk, you want a Terrapin, it's 11,094. So, I think that adds a lot of precedence to why we need to improve the crosswalks in these places, and hopefully, that'll help us. So, there's more information in here, but significantly, we put the grant in, and the total cost is $44,300 to the county with our contribution, which is pretty much labor in kind, which amounts to $3,300 for us to basically, if we can approve, to install a pole, is what our contribution would be in that. We do have a timeline in the project, and if it was approved, let me just go to that page, the engineer prepared bid specifications would occur between August and September, advertise September to October, you know, and essentially be ready to install equipment early December, prior to the, prior to the big thrust of the holiday season. I have received communication back from the county already. I know they're reviewing the application. They've asked for questions, and, you know, they want to know what the DOT process is. We do know that the audible, not the audible portion, but the light portion has already been approved by, in the town of Red Hook and in Hyde Park. So, we doubt, hopefully, they won't reject us, and hopefully, it also approved the audible portion as part of that. So, I'm hopeful. So, that's all for the grants.
Excellent.
Next, we're going to go into special requests. I'm going to read these off, because I believe everybody, unless somebody has a question, we can dig it out, but the board has had a chance to review all these. The Ryan, first one is the Rhinebeck Animal Hospital Customer Appreciation Day. It's really nothing for us, it's for our awareness, it's all on site, so they wanted to let us know. So, I make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Animal Hospital Customer Appreciation Day.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, so carried. Porch Fest, we already talked about. Next one would be Sinterklaas. Let me just pull up the dates, because I believe there's two for Sinterklaas here. There may be questions on that. The first one is the actual Sinterklaas event to be held, is the 12th Annual Sinterklaas, to be held on December 7th here in the village of Rhinebeck. So, there's been a lot of ongoing discussion in regard to preparation for Sinterklaas. A lot of that has to do with working with the Department of Health and getting their approval. So, we've met with them and have their list of criteria. We've pretty much met in the discussions, getting their approval, and we don't have the final stamp on it yet. We have to have the event application to get their approval for, but we've met their criteria, Sinterklaas event coordinators have met the criteria of what the Department of Health.
Is that a mass gathering permit? Because it's over 5,000.
Yes, yes. And that's part of that mass gathering, or that they approved. There were some outdated, some things that still needed discussion. One was meeting with Rhinebeck Savings Bank to get permission to use the Rhinebeck Savings parking lot as we have in the past and closing that off, you know, because we need to provide safety net there, and our emergency response sets up a tent in that parking lot as a midway place for any type of emergency response, they have closer activity. I met with them today, they wholeheartedly approved and will be giving us the application, you know, for, so that part is approved. We still, they, they still need to do the Department of Transportation event application, which is getting permission to close Route 9. And our event application is part of that process to get that. So, they're in the process of completing that, which is not done. And the same, as I mentioned, the Department of Health, which is a mass gathering permit, which has been working on, one of the conditions was getting parking. They felt we needed more parking in the village to be able to continue to hold this event. So, there's a meeting with the event organizer, myself, and Andy Barati at the fairgrounds, and the fairgrounds has agreed to let, provide, weather is appropriate, to let them use that parking lot at the corner of Platt and Mulberry, which the Department of Health asked for 100 cars, that can hold 200 cars, and if they're parked appropriately. And so, they've approved as long as it's the weather holds. So, that met the condition for, one of the conditions for the Department of Health to continue to have parking. So, again, there's more to happen with this, but the next step is for us to approve the application to start moving this forward. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve Sinterklaas 2019 for, what did I say, December 7th here in the, in the village of Rhinebeck.
Second.
Any discussion?
Couple of questions?
Sure.
Would they have a flagger out by that lot, out by the lot on the fairgrounds? Because you need people to park in rows and.
Yes, yes. To answer your question quickly, they committed to provide, not a flagger, but a person to park cars.
Okay, good.
Because that's the goal, getting 200 in there. Otherwise, it's.
Right, it'd be free for all. So, there won't be somebody there?
Yes.
Another one is, there was the request for using this space for the big arts and crafts, the, was it the crowns and the?
Yeah, so that's the next thing.
Okay.
If you want to hold that, you can hold that. So, any other discussion on the event application? Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? So carried, very good. The next is the use of Village Hall. We use that for the crown of branches every year, this building is used. And quite honestly, the event organizers said, if they don't have access to this, into the space, it's one of the crown jewels of the event. It really don't, it would be a huge hindrance on the event. There is an issue, and the issue that's been brought up is, one of the proposals was, because we're, by then, we're hoping that we will have our platform lift completed and installed, that platform lift and the access coming out onto the platform out there takes up space. So, it limits the accessibility. There will be an ADA-approved size space for people to get through, to come in here, but it's not going to be the full width. So, one of the suggestions was to be able to handle the capacity up here with that people come in and go out. Right. We talked to the fire department, and I agree with them that it really presents a security issue, because they're manning the station all day long with lots of people, fire trucks, apparatus, et cetera, and people coming in and going out through the firehouse side, they thought was a risk. And I, and I agree. So, that puts us back to, we have a much narrow pathway, but we do have a lift that's here for getting people up and down from out here. So, that's the issue for using up to the application is to use this space and set up on 12-6, tear down on 12-8, so, like, you know, et cetera, to be able to do that. And then, there's one more after that that we can talk about, Mass Municipal. So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Village Hall space for the crowns and branches as their size, and it's limited to the access here.
Second.
I guess I'd say, in the event of emergency, people can always go out.
It's an emergency.
Right, we have to. It should not be an unsafe situation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying?
I don't know if any of you have actually come up here during that event, but it's very, very crowded, and maybe you could ask them to have some sort of a monitor out there to just kind of, you know.
Is there a maximum room capacity?
Yes.
Good question. Yeah, I can, I will, I will pose that for them to be able to do.
They do take up the hallway.
They do.
And they kind of, you know, they've got, especially going down, going out, and the children are carrying these decorated branches, and it's, it's a little chaos.
I'm sorry, this, we do, no, this is all for using inside. They anticipate 100 people, you know, every half hour to coming in, going through, so. Okay, that's it for that one? And that is the Sinterklaas 2019, and Sinterklaas Building Use Request. We got a request from the county, Balloon Festival Mulberry Street Road Closure Request, right? I've met with the Dutchess County Fairgrounds on this request, and this request really belongs in the hands of the Dutchess County Fairgrounds, who is hosting the event, and then for them to make the decision if they truly want to close a road. So, the fairgrounds has asked us to defer us closing that road, to they make the decision on what the requirement is for the Balloon Fest by working with the county to do that. So, I make a motion that we do not move on this until we get response from the county fairgrounds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Night Perk. That's one I didn't print out, so you'll have to bear with me a second. I don't even see it on the thing here. Does anybody have a copy of the Night Perk? Could you read it? Because I don't have that one for long.
Oh, it's, it's in a sad document format. There's an email that. Yeah, which I can't read. Yeah, this is called, Attention Patricia Coon, this is Claudia Mayberry, the Outreach Director at Night Perk for the New Falls Office. You may remember us, from each year, we come to your area. We're a nonprofit organization, and we do door-to-door outreach throughout New York State. We would like to begin our outreach in a zip code 12572, Village of Rhinebeck, beginning shortly. I have attached to this email our letter of intent describing our activities. I will be sending you another email with the filled-out application that you requested shortly, and look forward to hearing back from you and the village. That was just last Thursday, the night.
What were the dates that they want to?
I don't know if that's on here.
I saw it, there was one.
New Falls staff list. No, they didn't include the dates.
So, normally, we run these through the police department, and I don't know if it's an issue or not, but I don't have any documentation that says we've gotten approval from our police department for going door-to-door on this, which is something we'd have to give them a permission to do. All they can make it?
If it's time-sensitive, we can have a special meeting and just get it approved.
Yes, all right. So, I'll go back and will work with our clerk to get additional information on this, because I don't think there's enough to move forward. The last one is from the Rhinebeck Central School District. This is from Donna Allison, Tom Bernal, and this is the use of the utility polls, they're putting their flags on, which they do yearly in the village. And they have approval from, in the application, they have the approval from the utility to be able to do this. This is something they've done every year, and it would be on East Marcus Street, and the polls are listed, and Montgomery Street, on East Marcus Street and Montgomery Street for the polls from 6/3/19 to 7/15/19 for the Rhinebeck Central School flag. So, I make a motion that we approve the use for the Rhinebeck Central School to install the flags on the utility polls. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Thank you. That takes us down to any other business? Any other business by anybody?
No.
Moving on, minutes approval. We have the minutes approval from 5/2, 4/14, 4/9, and 3/26, that were all included in your notes. I need to abstain from the 4/14, 2019, I did that with the Sunday meeting, 4/14 meeting, I was not here, so I abstained from that one. But I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Just a couple of typos real fast. On the 4/9 minutes, page number one, it's not Trustee Howard Korzac, it's Trustee Howard.
Trout.
That's on page one of the 4/9 minutes. 4/9 minutes on page number five, autism is spelled incorrectly twice on that page. Page five. That's it, Karen, so that's all I spoke of.
So, I'll amend the motion to say to approve the minutes, and so read with the amendments made by. Mismade and move forward.
Second. I'm sorry, I.
Did you miss one?
Yeah, on the May 2nd minutes, hospital is misspelled. It's not hop-siddle. Karen, it's right, the third paragraph, in the middle, I'm sorry, it's the second paragraph under Northern Dutchess Hospital Zoning District, hospital is spelled wrong.
Oh, I should, I'm going to abstain from that one. Because that's on my son's calendar.
All right. The Brandon's abstaining from that on the.
On 5/2.
5/2, I abstaining from 4/14, and get a motion to approve with the amendments.
So second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? So carried. Okay, next is, we have a lot of correspondence here this evening. Hopefully, Pat reads these in.
She's, we don't do it anymore.
We've been saying they're on file.
They're on file.
And they will be posted, all correspondence posted on our website, we have a process for doing that. All right, so unless anybody has any particular concerns about any one of them, we could read it, but I make a motion that we take all correspondence as entered and post it on our website.
So second.
Okay. I do have, we're talking to you a little bit.
Any discussion?
Discussion, yeah. So, there was a question about how we allocate tables at the farmer's market. Basically, a third-party candidate, or since I said that, we received the additional request for use, for use of the table at the farmer's market. We had already, we had a rule that you can only reserve it twice a month, any one organization can only reserve twice a month. So, basically, what's happened is that both the Democratic Committee and Republican Committee have locked up all of the dates and don't permit anybody else, or that's basically aced everybody else out. I don't know if we should change the rules to make it once a month. We initially made the change because we felt like we were concerned somebody was monopolizing a particular time. I don't know if we need to make the change, but I did. I don't know if we need to make the change, but I did.
Or add, or add another table.
I, well, didn't we, wasn't there a problem with another table? I thought that there was, that, that we had capped the number of tables. I thought that adding another table was a problem.
And I'm just bringing it back up as, as part of the discussion. It doesn't work on the east side as well as it does on the west side. Gives it away that they set up. So the west side is open.
Right, you can't have one on each side.
But also, we had the rule that it's first come, first served.
Yeah. And I don't know, you know, I'm not sure if I'm going to want to change it now, but maybe if, if this is going to continue to happen, we should maybe look at, it is a community space. It would be nice to have it open. Means anybody from the ASPCA or anybody else can't get in there. So.
I think the, the letter made the point that it's, you know, quote-unquote, an independent party candidate. So that kind of opens up the discussion as to put us to a party that, you know, merits or can, well, qualifies, so to speak, for that type of table. So anybody, it could be the Green Party, Independent Party. You know, how do we manage that in some reasonable way? And the letter, you know, was rather passionate about that issue, that, you know, they deserve, so to speak, equal space or at least the opportunity not to have it all locked out by one or the other party. So I was a little bit sympathetic to that point of view.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more, I mean, I don't really, for whatever their point of view is, we have rules about qualifications for not-for-profit local. It's really more, I just thought we're, we'd like to have a diversity, even if it's non-political, other people to be able to come in and.
That's kind of what it was for, the community table.
Yeah, to be a community table. And, I mean, in a way, the two major parties have kind of gave the rules to lock it up. I don't know if we need to change it now, but like you guys.
Can't now, but.
Right, we consider it maybe for next year.
Prospectively, we should.
Yeah, because we'd like to.
Yeah, I need to physically look at it and see.
Yeah.
Because I can't picture it really that well.
It's on, it's on the, it's on the west side, yeah. It's just, it's just more that, I mean, it is for the community, and if, basically, if I, two parties gave the rules to lock everybody else out, whatever the, whatever the community resource, maybe we need to be more restrictive.
So do you want to take?
It's just a question.
Well, can you take this on and at some point in time, bring it back?
Sure.
How's that?
Okay.
I mean, since you're trying to break up.
Okay.
Let's address it and.
Sure.
So I volunteer to help you out.
All right. I'll see you on Sunday.
I opened my mouth.
Right, I'll see you on Sunday.
All right, so Trusty Lloyd, Trusty Korzak are going to take on a study, and at some point in future, we'll bring back a recommendation.
I just want to get, I just want to get a sense of your board. I mean, do you think this is worth, do you just want to make this is worth taking a look at? Gentlemen, ladies.
We should have an answer for it, why we're not allowing others.
Well, it's pretty clear. We said that we allow, I mean, we, we, it's been two years now, at least, we've had the rule that it's first come, first served. And you can only take it twice, twice a month.
Would we be happy if one of the major parties got bumped and?
No, 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 I don't, and maybe we shouldn't do it now. I don't think, maybe the rules, these people, everybody's playing by the rules. The question is, should we be amending the rules? And again, I don't want to make it into a political thing. It could be the Girl Scouts, or the, like a table.
Yeah.
Or protesters, you know.
Or anybody, you know, represents somebody.
And it's for the community, it's for the community's use.
Any speech or political issue.
Well, but it's on, but the table is.
Not even related to what they call.
Right, we had, we've had animal welfare associations come in and.
We had a, what's the violin, the violin?
Oh, right, the strawberry, I think the strawberry family.
I thought we said no to this.
They just weren't, they were allowed to come out in front of the performance.
Right, they had a limit to number of people there. So, but it's, it's a community resource. It's a community resource. There are other community organizations.
So you, you guys are going to take it on?
All right.
So last, now we have no anniversaries this year, this month. So nothing to announce. Is there any, any motion by anybody to go into executive session?
No. Actually, yes. I do, yeah, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session.
For the subject of?
Personnel.
Oh, okay. All right. So I make a motion to close the meet, close our regular meeting and to go into executive session. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Now I make a motion to go into executive session. I'd like to make a motion to close our regular May 14th Village Board Meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Abstaining? So carry. Thank you, Panda.